is not the right strategy. The right strategy is to go forward with commissions on the status of women and to strengthen the women we have. And that's, I mean, I mean, anyone today knows that the women have a long way to go in this country still.
With that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this appointment, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That item has been approved. Thank you. Congratulations, Arson.
Thank you very much.
On Wednesday, item number nine was a second consideration of an ordinance that would establish the Graffiti Removal and Recovery Act. Now, this act would hold the parent or guardian of a minor graffiti offender liable for the recovery of abatement costs. Pointing to an increasing trend of harsher sentencing for our young people and the costs associated with incarceration, District Six Councilmember Tony Cardness called Senior Assistant City Attorney Bruce Reardon to the center table for an explanation of the proposed ordinance.
When a young person does time behind bars, they wear those little orange jumpsuits, we, the taxpayers, are paying $252,000 a year for them to be behind bars. Now, instead of tracking them to go that route, what we're talking about here is coupling the responsibility of their parents and the actual young person together and creating an opportunity for them to do some kind of restitution or payback and/or remove the graffiti and community service, correct?
That is correct.
Is that a lot cheaper than $252,000 a year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you tell us what this is about?
This is an alternate to incarceration. As someone put it, as Travis put it to me, before this, if this ordinance passes, then that will create an option. Without the ordinance, the option is to pursue the matter criminally or not to pursue it at all. And that has led us to the point in the city where, as we testified in public safety, we have, and this is a pretty extraordinary number, I thought it was extraordinary, a $7 million a year cost for graffiti abatement. And yet, our recovery is somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000, and that's an enormous gap that is...
Okay, wait a minute. So, we're spending about a $7 million as a city a year to remove graffiti, but when we look at recovering from the actual offenders, right now, we're bouncing around $50,000 a year.
Correct.
So, there's a tremendous imbalance of responsibility on behalf of the people who are creating this problem and us, the taxpayers, having to pay for trying to mitigate or remove the graffiti, right?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is an attempt, we took this assignment from Councilmembers Zion and Parks, and literally from the first week we met, and all three of the people at this table were in that meeting, our goal was to take the best parts of other ordinances, in our judgment, and to share that with the council, what we thought were the best parts of ordinances and approaches in other communities, Pico Rivera, San Jacinto, the county, but adapt them to LA, which is different from those communities. The problem is bigger here, and it is, to put it in an expression, the best metaphor, like we mentioned yesterday, Los Angeles is not Mayberry, meaning that we can't simply have a graffiti problem that is then taken care of that afternoon and we move on. Oftentimes, it takes as long as a year, maybe even longer, to correct a graffiti problem in a particular neighborhood, or I think of blocks of the Harbor Gateway, or of your district in the valley. It sometimes can take months and even years to correct a graffiti problem.
Concerned about areas that continually attract graffiti, District One Councilmember Ed Reyes asks about alternative security measures to identify graffiti vandals.
There are some areas that we know that are chronic sites with this continuous graffiti over and over again. I think some of our bridges are being held up by the paint that we put on it. But if you look at some of the walls that are next to middle schools, like Menengal Middle School on Figueroa, you've got these walls that have been painted on since I was a kid, going back forty years.
Oh.
Wow, okay, 45. But the fact is, our ability to use these funds, would it allow us to move forward in a way in which, let's say, an area requires a camera to enhance security, we've been painting and painting forever, no one seems to identify the taggers or those who are hitting it. It's an area where two or three gangs converge and they're constantly trying to fight for their presence there. They want their tag to be the one that stays, but because of the good work of our graffiti removal folks, maybe it lasts four or five hours, maybe it lasts two days. So, can we use this fund to move in a direction where we can put together a system that has cameras, that is enhanced with the security in here, whether with the school district or with the LAPD, or, let's say, the sheriffs with the rail stations? You have different jurisdictions that have police presence, break down the communication, they tend to function in silos, everyone's overwhelmed, but if we can put these cameras where they can't be shot out, we can disguise them within the fabric, it might help us identify who is actually doing the tagging. Is that something we can do?
Yes, sir. And in fact, I believe, I'm familiar with the Walk Bridge that you're referring to because my colleague, Arturo Martinez, I think, worked with your district to, that bridge was a perfect example of a location where graffiti was so intense that people just didn't use the bridge because it was too scary. And I mean that in the most sincere way. And that's been cleaned up, but that's one step in the right direction. We need to make that a citywide project. And the short answer to your question, knowing everyone's time is very important here, is yes.
Asking for the kitchen sink to be included in the ordinance, Councilmember Dennis Zion explains what steps are being taken in his District Three to stop graffiti vandals, and asks if everything possible is being done.
Because what else can we do that we haven't done that your research shows we can implement into another ordinance? You've done a lot of research, Jody, I know you've got every book and every CD on this issue.
Sure.
What kind of things can be included that we haven't included? Because when we drive down the freeways, when we drive down the streets, the city is turning into a graffiti-laden environment, and it's negative for everyone. Now, the gang bangers may like it, the taggers may like it, everyone else is frustrated with it. So, what else can we put in that we haven't put in? I want the kitchen sink included in this to give every tool available to eradicate this, lest other cities have been successful in eradicating. We've tolerated, we need to eradicate it. Go ahead.
That is the goal. The goal is to make, well, the goal would be to be at a point where Councilmember Labange pointed out that we are the leading edge of this, where we like to think in other areas we set the standard. That said, this ordinance already has started a process, as I mentioned before, that I want to underline, with, and we met with Chief Moore, for example, in the valley on Friday. He is laser, his focus is laser-like on this problem too, as far as I can tell. And he knows, like we know, that the process that's before us now is taking this to the next level. This can't just be an ordinance, Jody can't just be, Jody Galvin can't just be a coordinator who's going to meetings. This has to be something real. And we need, and that's the importance of having LAPD assign it to certain ownership with certain members of the command staff, just as we have. It has to be owned by certain individuals. People do count, they make a difference, and when it's assigned to certain people, things get done.
Please open the roll on that item. Do we have to open the roll, close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Next item.
And joining us now is Senior Assistant City Attorney Bruce Reardon. Mr. Reardon, welcome back to Council Week in Review.
Well, it's nice to be here, Jack. It's nice to be here to talk about the subject that we're addressing today as well.
Well, certainly, we've watched a bit of the council discussion with you on graffiti. Some people claim that graffiti is art. Is graffiti ever art?
Not for the victims of graffiti. When graffiti is done on public property, private property, or any other kind of property, it's vandalism. It can range from an infraction to a misdemeanor to a felony, but in those cases, whether it has artistic quality or not, is simply not relevant. It is a crime, it is vandalism. In other arenas, we know, in fact, we're trying to direct some graffiti vandals towards creative uses. They can go to schools to put graffiti up in places where it may in fact be art, but when it's on private property, it's vandalism, it's a crime, it's as simple as that.
Let's talk about the ordinance at hand. What are the four parts of the ordinance? How will they be applied, and what laws currently govern graffiti vandals?
Thanks, Jack. This new ordinance, which was inspired by Councilmembers Zion and Parks, and it was inspired by their review of some new laws that had popped up in the county of Los Angeles as well as across the state and the country, they then consulted with the city attorney's office, and over the last year, we produced a really revamped ordinance to address graffiti as we currently deal with it. We had the expression, "to bring the ordinance into the 21st century," so that graffiti, which has been a problem for years and years, but is a much bigger problem now, can be dealt with effectively. This ordinance provides a middle ground. In the past, graffiti vandalism was dealt with in one of two ways, either as a crime to be prosecuted as a felony or misdemeanor, or frankly, not at all, simply to be watched over and cleaned up at great expense to the city, I might add. What this provides in the middle is a four-step process that takes the graffiti vandal, and can, the graffiti vandal can now, with this ordinance, be subjected to, in the first step, to monitoring and classes for parenting, if it's the parent of a graffiti vandal, or for the young man, to be given services so that they can redirect their energies. If needed, the person can be sent to community service, which frankly is pretty hard work, and typically will involve abatement of graffiti. If that doesn't work, they can be fined up to $1,000, and if the fines don't work or are not paid, a lien can actually be put on property so that the government can collect that money.
As for the graffiti vandals themselves, what's the typical age for a graffiti vandal? Why are they so difficult to catch? And don't some of them see this as their identity in life, their signature?
Oh, those are really good questions. And in fact, the typical age we're seeing, it straddles, and which makes it, this actually makes it extra difficult to follow up, because it straddles the juvenile category. We have a lot of young teenagers, 12 to 17, 12 to 18, who are throwing graffiti up on walls. We also have 18, 19, 20, 21-year-olds. Now, they're adults under the law. So, we have this straddle between the juvenile system and the adult system. And that puts an extra burden on prosecutors, because we have to work together to deal with the problem. But what you say is absolutely right. It is an epidemic-quality problem, because for these taggers, as they're called, as they call themselves, it is truly their identity. I mean, they are marking their territory, truly, and when it's gang graffiti, they're literally marking their territory, indicating this is territory of a particular gang. If it's a tagging crew, they're expressing the fact that they want it to be known that they tagged a particular area. And then to follow up on your question, it's so hard to catch, and I've been a career prosecutor, I've been a prosecutor for a long, a long time, and two of the hardest crimes to catch are graffiti and arson. They both take place typically late at night, they're usually done, like I said, under the cover of night, done by a crew, lookout is involved, they're done in areas that are often underpopulated or depopulated, and, you know, there aren't that many police out on those areas at that time. Unless someone is literally caught in the act, it is very hard to follow up on one of these cases.
We heard you refer to graffiti vandalism as a gateway crime. How so?
It may be the ultimate gateway crime. Many people try and look at, try and find gateway crimes, and by that we mean crimes that when they're committed by young people, if they're not, if there isn't intervention and prevention at an early stage, those crimes can lead to bigger, worse, more dangerous crimes. And by dangerous, I mean, not only dangerous to the public, but dangerous to the individual. Here's what I mean. You start with gang graffiti, or you start with putting your name up, to a lot of young people, that seems like a nothing crime. They don't consider it a big deal. But that is a gateway, the person can get caught, get picked up, pick up a short rap sheet or a criminal record, get deeper and deeper into the gang life, and you, so you have a 12, or 13, or 14-year-old that starts tagging a wall. Ten years later, that guy can be in jail for the rest of his life for an attempted murder. That's the sort of gateway that we want to get to at the young age, intervene, redirect that person, so they never get to that latter stage.
You refer to the cost to society there. What does it cost the city of Los Angeles for graffiti removal? And would this new ordinance offer cost savings?
The cost is extraordinary. In the research of developing this ordinance, we've all learned, and then whenever we share it with anyone, they're surprised to know that last year, last year alone, the city of Los Angeles spent $7 million on graffiti abatement, just to clean up. $7 million for the cleanup of 560,000 locations. The city recovered in restitution $50,000. So, the gap is extraordinary. We hope with this ordinance and with enhanced efforts by the LAPD and the city attorney's office, working with our other counterparts like the DA, we hope to close that gap on both ends. On one end, we hope to bring down the number of graffiti incidents, that'll bring the number down. On the other end, we hope to bring back some money through civil fines and penalties so that we can use that money to catch more graffiti vandals.
By the way, how are you working with the LAPD? A lot of people would say that they have much more serious crimes to deal with out there, beyond graffiti.
That's a really good question, and people do say that. And in fact, when I started this job a couple of years ago, it was a concern of mine too, that LAPD may not be interested in this, because they do have really serious crimes, not just gang crimes, but domestic violence, sex offenders, they have to keep the city safe. That said, Chief Bratton and his command staff agree with the city council, the mayor, and those of us who work this area, that this crime is a serious crime. To the public at large, it's not just blight, although it is blight, it's also a symbol of decay, it can be fearful, it can be intimidating. In fact, some street corners throughout the city of LA, as we learned in council, as various council members testified, there are some parts of the city that people are afraid to go to because there's so much graffiti. So, the problem is real, and what Chief Bratton has done with his command staff is really ramp up what's known as community policing. So, they're out there in the community, and these are the kind of crimes that they can focus on, what are known as the quality of life crimes. And I will go further and say that in the last few months, I think it's been as a result of this ordinance process, Chief Bratton has assigned a coordinator for that, as has the city attorney, and we anticipate working together over the next six months to a year and producing some good results.
You've just been talking about the criminal aspects. I thought a few minutes ago, you made reference to it almost being a family problem as well. In fact, I think you brought up family counseling as a possibility.
That's right. I mean, and it's a very good point, Jack. I mean, there is, look, this is a crime. If you deface property, it's a crime. But we also have to recognize that our prisons are overcrowded, and they're overcrowded with a lot of violent criminals, drug traffickers, sex offenders, people who are in jail because they're a threat to the public. We know that when it comes to graffiti, in many instances, it's a lesser crime. It's a crime that does not represent an immediate threat to the public. So, those individuals, and particularly if they're young, particularly if they're juveniles, prison and custody may not be the best place for them. In fact, many of us think it's not the best place to start. We want to start, and this graffiti ordinance allows us to have options as prosecutors to recommend to the court, and we think the courts are very receptive to this, alternate sentencings, monitoring, community service, put the young person to the test, see if they can pass these tests without going to jail. If they succeed, they move on. If they fail, frankly, we know what happens. That's a cycle that does tend to lead to jail. But if we can intervene at an early stage, keep those people out of jail, we can save everyone a lot of money, and frankly, prevent a lot of tragedy.
Anybody who lives in the city of Los Angeles, or even some of the surrounding communities like Loebank and San Fernando, has no doubt noticed that the same places keep getting tagged over and over and over, keep getting painted over, and tagged again. What can you do about that, if anything? And frankly, if somebody sees graffiti being painted in progress, what should they do?
Well, that's maybe the most important question of all, because people do see it all the time. We're told, even today, individuals told me, even in the studio, that they've seen it happen. It is something that people witness all the time, and it's very important that if anywhere in the city of LA witnesses graffiti going on at that moment, that's a crime in progress, and they can call 911 and report it to the police, because that literally, and they report it as a crime in progress to the graffiti vandalism. If we take a step back from that, someone wants to report the fact that the graffiti is up there, but it's not a crime in progress, they want to report it on their building or in their neighborhood. The best source for that is the 311 system, the Los Angeles 311. Everyone knows about 911, everyone knows about 411, but 311 is the number to call to report graffiti in your neighborhood. It will be followed up on and cleaned up on. Now, I have one more piece of information for people. If they have an ongoing problem in their neighborhood, but they can't exactly report it as a crime in progress, but it's more than just some graffiti on a wall, Chief Bratton and his command staff have established and really ramped up what's known as the Senior Lead Officer Program, the SLO. There's a senior lead officer in every division, every division of LAPD, at least one, maybe several. Reach out, find out who your senior lead officer is, reach out to them, and report the problem. I guarantee you'll get a response. Whether we can fix the problem to your satisfaction, that remains to be seen, but I guarantee you'll get a response from LAPD.
All terrific information. Very briefly, because we're almost out of time, something that has occurred to me and maybe other people as well, the very first response you gave us, you referred to it as being graffiti on public property. Well, what about all those especially white vans that are on bridge overpasses and in front of people's businesses? Those are also increasingly falling victim to graffiti as well.
In fact, it's become, there's actually an expression for it, Jack, you're so right, that it's actually become an expression in law enforcement, box truck graffiti. There is so, you're absolutely right. Anyone, now that you've mentioned it, I'm sure if anyone watching this show has heard, here's the expression, "box truck graffiti." They will see it literally the next time they're out on the roads. That's really the next step, the next phase. Councilmember Zion asked us to make a report over the next 90 days to the city council. He wanted a report on spray paint, but I can also tell you that an area that we'll make a report on is on box truck graffiti. It's another serious problem, harder problem to address because the trucks are always, just like you said, they're always on the move, harder to locate, but we have some ideas that we will be submitting to the city council to see if we can bring down the blight that box truck graffiti presents to people on a daily basis. And Jack, if I could make one last point that I didn't bring up, I don't want to waste your time, but I know you asked me to address, if people see graffiti taking a place in their neighborhood, please do not intervene. Law enforcement has asked me to ask, to tell the people of LA, "Don't intervene, it's dangerous. Don't take your life in your, don't put your life at risk to stop graffiti. Call the police, they're trained, they will intervene, and if you do make that call, you can really make a contribution to your neighborhood."
Thanks so much for all the information and the advice from Senior Assistant City Attorney Bruce Reardon. Thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review. Again, your Los Angeles City Council voted unanimously to enact the Graffiti Removal and Recovery Act. To report acts of vandalism again, just call 311, your one call to City Hall. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at 638 South Beacon Street, Room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending May 22, 2009. On behalf of Tom Kuhara and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back! Get the message, be prepared!
My god, how does this happen? As a child, I was always in a hurry. As I got older, I was always distracted. And in another second...
I got hit by a car.
I'll kill a little girl. Our driving behavior starts at an early age. Traffic safety is everybody's responsibility. Watch the road.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for May 27th, 2009. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, council members Richard Alarcon, Bernard Parks, Jan Perry, Ed Reyes, Jack Weiss, Herb Wesson, and Dennis Zine. We have a few excuses on the desk for today. Mr. Cardenas is excused and Ms. Gruel is excused, and we do expect Mr. Weezer but at 11 o'clock. That leaves Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Smith, who we are waiting, and it is past 10 o'clock, the appointed hour to begin our council meetings, and pursuant to council rules, all council members should be here at the beginning of the meeting, so those members are late if they will please make their way down to council chambers right away. In the meantime, we want to welcome members of the public that are here in chambers, those viewing us on Channel 35 and in our remote facilities in Van Nuys City Hall and in San Pedro City Hall. We are also available online at lacity.org, where we archive our past council meetings for your convenience, as well as our agenda items and all of the paperwork attached to those at lacity.org. If you're not close to your television or computer, you can always use your telephone and call number to listen to our council meetings. That's called council phone, and the telephone number is (213) 621-CITY. That's (213) 621-CITY. And you can listen in not only to our full council meetings, but any of our committee meetings as well. Our agendas are made available online. Those are 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special agenda items, and they are split into items that have had public hearings in committee, and those for which public hearings have not yet been held. If you'd like to be heard on any of those items, please fill out a speaker card if you're here in City Hall, or in Van Nuys, or San Pedro, where we can listen to you remotely, and hand that to one of the city staffers or the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to add you to the mix. Items that have not yet had a public hearing are automatically triggered with a card from the public. Items that have had a public hearing require a council member to reopen them for your card to be heard. Lastly, we have a section of the meeting called General Public Comment, which is for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city council. And if you'd like to be heard, again, fill out a speaker card and just put "Public Comment" in the upper right corner, and we'll be sure to hear your comments today during our meeting. We have a clock to help you guide your time, it's two minutes per speaker. We ask all speakers to, pursuant to the Brown Act, stay relevant to the item that they are discussing. If there are items that are not on the agenda you'd like to discuss, that is when you can discuss them in General Public Comment. Otherwise, we'll make sure that you keep to the topic that is at hand before us. We now have nine members, we are still awaiting Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labonge, and Mr. Rosendahl. As soon as we have Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labonge, or Ms. Hahn here, we will be able to begin the meeting. Want to thank everybody for their patience while we wait for those late council members, and we will start shortly. This is our final forum call for council members Hahn, Labonge, and Rosendahl. This is our last forum call for those three council members, if they can please come down immediately. If we do not have a forum, we will have to adjourn for lack of a forum. It is 10:15 now. Councilmember Rosendahl, councilmember Labonge, and councilmember Hahn. The sergeants-at-arms can please inquire to their whereabouts and assist us, thank you. Item clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Ross, Mel, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a forum, Mr. President.
Okay, everybody, we're starting the meeting. If I can please take the first order of business, if we can ask folks to move their conversations, please to either outside the chambers or behind them, or keep our comments to a minimum. Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds, without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there's a request to continue several of the items, item number 16, a request to continue that matter to July 7th.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue 16 till the 7th of July, seeing no objection. So ordered. We have Ms. Gruel here as well, you can lock her in.
And also, request to continue item number 21 to June 9th, and that's for publication of the ordinance.
Okay, is there any objection?
For publication of the notice.
There's no objection, we'll go ahead and continue 21 till the 9th of June for publication of the ordinance.
And also, item number 44, request to continue that matter to June 26th.
Okay, June 26th for item 44, is there any objection? Seeing none, so ordered.
And also, the closed session item, well, one of the closed session items, rather, item number 45, a request to continue that matter to June 17th.
Okay, is there any objection on item 45, to continue that to the 17th of June? Seeing none, go ahead and let's continue that as well. First items?
First item on the agenda is item number one, and that's an item notice for public hearing. Recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinance to be presented on June 17th.
Okay, there's no objection, we'll go ahead and continue that ordinance to the 17th, and present that for public hearing. Next item?
Next item is also public hearing, item number two, that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 7.
Okay, call that special for Mr. Alarcon. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 3 through 19, with the exception of 16 that's already been acted on. Item number three is the commissioner, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold the nomination on the desk.
And also, on item number 11, a report is in the process of being submitted on that item.
Okay, let's wait for 11. Any specials, colleagues? This is 3 through 19. Mr. Parks?
Number eight for Ms. Hahn, also call special number 11.
Okay. And I assume 19, Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Number 19 for Mr. Reyes. Other specials, colleagues? 3 through 19?
I'm sorry, did you wish to hold 3 on the desk for the commissioner?
Yeah, I was just, I just meant 3 through 19, the grouping. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's take up the balance. Let's hold four also as an ordinance, I think we are expecting 12 members. Sorry, and let's take up the balance, please tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 20 through 44, 10 votes are required for consideration, and, Mr. President, there's a request on item number 27 to refer that matter to ITGS.
Okay, is there any objection to referring item 27 to ITGS? If not, let's go ahead and do that. Do we have cards in the public on the notice?
Yes, I believe there are cards on 20, 24, 25, 26, 36, 37, 38, and 39.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards in the public, and we'll open and close the other public hearings. Any other specials, colleagues? 20 through 44, 38, Mr. Parks?
Yes, 38 special, and also, let's see, where's my, the reward motion?
That's the 38?
38, yes, and we'd like to ask for out of order.
Yeah, if there's no objection, we'll take that out of order. Other items, colleagues? If not, let's take up the balance, please. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, we'll call special for closed session, and if we can take up the ordinances that we passed up while we're waiting 12 members, please. That would be number four, I think, only.
Yes, that's correct, only number four.
Please open the roll on four, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved.
It's reported that Ms. Hahn is just concluding her meeting, she wanted to reconsider 43 for a special.
Item 43, okay. We can reopen the roll on reconsideration for 43. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And we will call that special for Ms. Hahn. We'll take two items before our public hearing. Those will be our item 38, Mr. Parks has asked for out of order, if we'd like to take up that item, and then we'll do the commissioner, and then we will come back to the public comment. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask Detective Kilcoyne to come up to the counter, and we'd also like him to introduce his partner, Inigas, can come up also. Also, we have two family members that are here, the Ward family and also the Alexander family, if you could come up with the detectives. Colleagues, what we have here is a very unique case in which has gone over a decade or two in the city of L.A.
Excuse me, Mr. Parks, can I ask everybody please to move their conversations? Mr. Alarcon, others, if you can please move your conversations elsewhere just for the meeting right now, and please keep the talking to a minimum, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very unique case that we're renewing a reward motion. Very rarely do we have what we consider a serial homicide case in this city, but what's unique about this is that there's been a passage of time that goes all the way back to the 1985, and to the current time. But due to the technology of DNA and ballistics, these detectives have started on cold cases and pulled together a total of 12 cases, 11 in the city of L.A., 11 homicide victims, but 10 are in the city of L.A. Only one of these victims has survived the attack by the suspect. We'd like to ask Detective Kilcoyne to give an overview, and this is the reward that may be one of the highest ones we've ever done, with $50,000 per victims, it amounts to about $550,000. But what we also have asked, that we have a caveat, that not one person could get over $200,000. So if you can give us an overview of the cases, and also, we ask the family members, once the detective speaks, that you can also make your personal plea to the public to help solve this case.
Thank you, councilman. Good morning. My name is Dennis Kilcoyne, and I am the supervisor detective of what's referred to as the Grim Sleeper Task Force. The Grim Sleeper name was assigned to us by the media, so we're stuck with it. This series has gone on since 1985. From 1985 to the end of 1988, there was a brutal time in Los Angeles for the violence in South Los Angeles, particularly along the Western Avenue corridor. A number of murders took place, and in hindsight, we have, now that we have the forensics to go back and examine, reexamine what was taking place during the 1980s, we realize that multiple serial killers were at work in the same general area of Los Angeles at that time. Right now, we have identified the one who has not been caught is our suspect, and he has been identified to 12 different crimes, 11 murders, and one attempted murder, the brutal attack on our surviving victim at the end of 1988. And since then, he, as far as we know, he disappeared off our radar screen from the end of 1988 until 2002, when he reappeared and committed another murder. The 11th murder was committed in 19, I'm sorry, 2004, then he stopped again for three years, and once again in January of 2007, he struck again. And we have a DNA profile of this individual that links him to, through DNA, to six of the 12 cases, and our ballistic information is consistent with nine of the 12 cases, and we have crossover both ballistic and DNA on three of the 12 cases. So we are certain that we are looking for the same individual who committed all of these crimes. And so with the councilman's assistance, we have gotten multiple things in the works right now with our investigation. We're traveling throughout the country chasing 20-year-old leads, but one of the most significant But one of the most significant points is the City Council's reward that has been publicized for months now. And we constantly receive information on a daily basis. And one day, because of this, we're going to find the key to unlock this case. You can contact my office through email, Or you can telephone us at 877-LAPD247. And the department is set up to route all of the information pertaining to this case to my office. It's my privilege to introduce today family members of 2 of our victims. I have Mr. and Mrs. Porter Alexander, their daughter Alicia Monique Alexander was one of our victims in the 1980s. And then also the family of victim number 4, Barbara Ware. And I have Diana and Sheri Ware present on her behalf today. Would you like to say something, Mr. Porter?
Good morning, Councilman. I'm the father of Alicia Monique, which is the victim of 1988 crime. We're here to ask the Council to continue with the reward as was set forth for us in my daughter's and the other family's behalf. You know that this person is very vicious. He's shown that he has an operational capacity to move around the city, as he have shown that he's very much in touch with the LA area. Things that is not more or less clear that how he's able to do this is in an area that, basically, South Central, is not all that large in a sense of movement, but yet he evaded even any sites of people to identify of his operation that he tends to more or less make his efforts to continue to do. So we ask the family and especially my family and all the other families that don't take this as lightly and continue to openly enhance this here so we can get this madman off the streets. Thank you very much, and the half of the Alexander family.
I'm Mary Alexander, Alicia Monique Alexander's mother. Alicia was our youngest child out of 5. She was a very loving daughter and we miss her very much. And I hope you guys will keep the money up so we can find somebody that did these crimes to our daughter and the other daughters. Because I'm sure the mothers love their daughters just like I love mine. And thank you.
Good morning, my name is Diana Ware. My daughter Barbara was the 4th victim of this serial killer. We would like you to reinstate this reward. I think this is the key, hopefully, to catching this person. Barbara was, like I said, the 4th victim. And the tape that they've been playing, the 911 call, was about her body being dumped in January of 1987. They had a description of the van, license plate, but nothing so far has come up. And I really hope that you will continue this reward and your efforts to find this person. I'm sure someone out there knows something and we're just hopeful that someone will come forward so this person can be caught and stopped. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheri Ware and Barbara was my niece. It's been 22 years since Barbara was murdered. And we're still looking for answers. And we're still looking for any help that we can get. And we're thinking that maybe the reward would be of help in finding this murderer. But just like all the other family members, we're just looking for closure.
Yeah, my name is Margaret Prescott. I'm with Black Coalition Fighting Back Serial Murders and want to support the call from the families for reinstating the reward. But I founded the Black Coalition Fighting Back Serial Murders back in the mid-1980s around the South Side slayings. Some of you may recall that. We had no idea that decades later, we would still be dealing with the serial murders of women in our community. There's increasing concern on the part of the community about safety, about information getting out. The reward being established is certainly one incentive that would help us to bring some closure and for residents of the community to feel like Council is taking, you know, some direct action to help to resolve these crimes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, we also want to thank Clear Channel, who put up a number of billboards to highlight this crime. I'd just like to go briefly so that the public is aware and they may bring additional information to the detectives. But the victims that I go through is Deborah Jackson, age 29, that was a homicide victim in August 85 in the area of West Gage in South Vermont. Henrietta Wright, 35, was a victim August 12, 86 in the 2500 block of West Vernon. Thomas Steele, victim August 14, 1986, near 71st and Halldale. Barbara Ware found January 10, 87 in the alley 1300 block East 56th Street. Bernita Sparks, 25, found April 16, 1987 in the alley 9400 block South Western. Mary Lowe, 26, found November 1, 1987. She was at the 8900 block of Western. Kresha Jefferson, 22, found January 30, 1988 in the 2200 block of 102nd Street. Alicia Alexander, 18, found September 11, 1988 in the 1700 block of West 43rd Street. The lone victim that survived is a young female that was shot in the South LA area and actually provided the description of the vehicle. And she's the only victim, and this happened November 20, 1988. Then Princess Bartholomew, 14, was found March 9, 2002 in the alley 8100 block of South Venice. Valerie McCorvey found July 11, 2003, between 109th and 108th Street near Dinkler. And Janesia Peters, 25, was found, let's see, in South LA on the, we don't have a date on that, but was found in a dumpster in South Los Angeles. But these are the victims. We'd ask the public for your help and also think again, Clear Channel, Detective Kilcoyne, would you just give the number again for the public to contact you?
Yes, sir, it's 877-LAPD247. Or they can email directly to my task force Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our colleagues asked for an eye vote on this renewal of this reward.
Thank you very much to the families that are here, to our department and to Mr. Parks. We do have one more speaker card that's out in Van Nuys before we take a vote.
The city is not effective in finding these murderers and will need the help of enlisting the public and finding these people. That is done through the reward process. And the 500,000 should not have to be renewed, but it be as a standing reward that extends until that person is found. There is no statute of limitations for murder and there should be no limitations for the reward that is extended. So the $500,000 should certainly be approved and continue on without requiring input from the Council to renew it, as well as 500,000 extending to any information in an arrest and conviction of any person committing murder in Los Angeles. Without the help of the public, we're at a place in Los Angeles now where we're watching murder going on all the time. And the city has its hands tied with not being able to solve these murders. I'm for this $500,000 award and I'm thoroughly against putting the caveat of $200,000 to any single person. If the person finds the person and brings them in, then they deserve the money. And this isn't about money, but it's about stopping murder. And the $500,000 is just and the $200,000 limit is unjust. Do the right thing. Thank you.
We will, oh, sorry, we have one more card here as well. Mr. Sacks, would you like to come forward?
Thank you. In a hearing held in City Council chambers on April 1st regarding the DNA backlog, Deputy Chief Beck stated that part of the DNA backlog was due to the LAPD's policy, the LAPD detective policy regarding evidence processing. That policy was, "Don't start until asked." I'm wondering how many of these cases that you're offering the reward on would have slipped into that policy pot and are now being brought to light because of the new DNA policy regarding the federal government and the DNA database? I think the families should check into that to see if their loved ones were victimized not only once by a rat perpetrator, but by the LAPD's detective policy. Thank you.
We have one more speaker card, Matt Dowd in Van Nuys.
Yeah, thank you, it's San Pedro. And, yeah, I want to clear this up. First of all, they're going to approve this reward, so you can relax and it's going to go through. But here's what I want to call to the community. Anyone who watches us and fans, this is city business that is important. And I'm glad the City Council is addressing this. And what I want to call, people to give information to that number that they gave to LAPD because they're only as good as the information they get from the community. And it's one of the things we talk about a lot in LAPD. You know, we got them here too. It's how you deal with the community when these big issues come up. A lot of people don't like to come forward because they've had these little problems, whatever it's been. And it's one of these systemic problems. And here's the result, this guy hasn't been caught for lack of information. So I'm calling for the public to get on this one because this is one that has to be taken care of. Thank you.
Please open the roll on this item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
As approved, without objection, we'll send that forth with to the mayor. As we mentioned, we'll take one more item before going to general public comment. That is for the commission nomination. That is before us. That is item number 3. Ms. Vega, if you'd like to come forward to the table. And just before, yes, I'd like to recognize Mr. Alarcon for an introduction.
Members, I'd like to welcome the students from Fenton Avenue Elementary. If you could all stand, this is, please, all the kids from Fenton Avenue Elementary. These are the student leaders from Fenton Avenue. And I am joined by Mia Munji, who I've asked to tell us which teachers are here with their students.
Ms. Quilter, Ms. Ferry, Ms. Rutter.
All of these students are leaders and I could only pick one, but I want all the kids to know that you're going to be on Channel 35 tonight and we're going to give you the time so you can tell your parents to look for that. And Mia's going to be especially featured. But I can tell you that as a charter school, Fenton is one of the most outstanding schools in the state of California. And I say that, having served on the Education Committee in the State Senate, I'm very well aware of the work started by 2 excellent principals where they have a co-leadership. So this is a very special school and they're here to learn about city government. And I have absolutely no doubt that one of these kids will someday be representing the community here at City Hall.
Thank you and welcome. Great to have you all in chambers. Let's give them a round of applause for coming down here. Thank you. Next, we have item number 3, which is the nomination of Ms. Belinda Vega to the Renegyment Commission. Want to thank you for putting yourself forward for service and congratulate the mayor. We heard in our Housing, Community and Economic Development Committee this morning this nomination and wanted to give you a second to tell the Council about your interest and to the wider public as well.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Council President. I am very eager to serve on this commission. I'm very honored that the mayor nominated me for this appointment. My name is Belinda Vega. I grew up in La Puente, California. Went to La Puente High School. I now live in Hollywood in Tom LeBarbe's district. And I just wanted to say that I think I would be a good commissioner for this commission. I was born and raised in Los Angeles, went to UCLA, went to Columbia Law School. I now practice in downtown Los Angeles at the law firm of O'Melveny and Myers. I've been a litigator for 10 years. I'm from the neighborhood. My parents are immigrants from Mexico. I understand that rent and housing issues are very important in the city of LA and I think I would do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, this went through unanimously in the Housing Committee today. So if nobody else wishes to be heard, it's been a good week for Latinas in nominations, so.
I should hold.
This is our little part of the nationwide trend. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations on your nomination. Commissioner, welcome aboard. We'll go to general public comment now and Bruce Darian will be our first speaker out in Van Nuys. It'll be 2 minutes per speaker. After that, it's Arnold Sacks here in Council Chambers.
Morning, City Council. You know, for the last 4 years, I've come here discussing public corruption. And I've been a whistleblower for 9 years under the False Claims Act. And what's been astounding is to see the level of continuity of cooperation in covering up public corruption. It's astounding. And I'm going to be coming here regularly now. I'll be going to the Board of Supervisors in the state of California. This will be a Mr. Smith Goes to Washington. You can count on that. The courts have pulled the rug out. They've eliminated due process on every single hearing. More than 150 times, the court ruled. And at no time did they ever allow myself to come in oral argument. It's unprecedented. But we'll get into the mechanics of the fraud. But I would like to say this, a council member was grilling the SEC about a month ago and explained that the whistleblower, who turned in Bernie Madoff, he said that he stuck your face in the dung of corruption, speaking to the SEC, and you still couldn't get it. And here, this lone person figured out the whole scheme and brought it to you and you still couldn't get it. And that's essentially what I've done with the corruption surrounding Los Angeles. This does not have to do with building a pier in Malibu. This has to do with government contract fraud. And the stench of corruption here in Los Angeles is abound. And we'll be going over it in the weeks to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks here in Council Chambers, to be followed by Sean Simons.
Good morning, you criminals. In my public comment from yesterday, I made mention of the Watergate scandal perpetrated by the government as a comparison to the foul motion presented and perpetrated by this City Council. I refer to the Hahn-LeBonds motion regarding the change of dates from Sunday to Memorial Day for the marathon, an action that never taken by this council nor any group affiliated with the marathon. The marathon date change was from March Sunday to President's Day in February, an action taken in this council chambers that was not highly praised. Maybe if I compared this council's action to an act that occurred more recently in national news, you'd get some attention. I refer to the fiasco that occurred with the Illinois ex-governor, where he offered, offered to sell... offered to sell the vacated seat of Barack Obama to the highest bidder. Offered to sell, and he was vilified, and he was removed from office. Offered. In the City Council chambers, the action, the motion that contains a blatant lie was moved and acted on by all sitting council members and the city council attorney. Moved, acted on. Any outcry? Anybody upset? Only one person, it seems. Newspapers vilified the ex-governor. Don't know what I'm talking about, Mr. Smith? Pay attention. Were you here when they changed it?
Excuse me, Mr. Sacks. That's a last warning. We have a very specific, and we've warned you before... No, sir. About slanderous and any abusive speech, and not to address council members directly. You seem to be going over that line, and in my judgment, when you start by calling us criminals, when you start with abusive or slanderous language, that violates the policy, and you've been warned before. So you will now come back. Two meetings from now, you'll be available to speak per our policy, but in the meantime, you have violated that policy. Our next speaker is Sean Simons. After that will be Zuma Dog. Could you please move for our next speaker, sir? Sir, we always treat you with the most politeness, and you do not, and it is in violation of slanderous and abusive parts of that. Sean Simons will be our next speaker. Very good morning to you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about the city's budget, specifically your budget, the city council's budget. In case any of you missed the informative article in the LA Weekly comparing the salaries of staffers and perks of the Los Angeles City Council with San Francisco and San Diego, here are the facts. In Los Angeles, our city council members make $179,789 a year, while their counterparts in San Francisco and San Diego have to squeak by with a paltry $98,660 and $75,836. How do they manage to put bread on the table? In Los Angeles, our council members staff some 20 staffers apiece, while in San Francisco and San Diego, staff two and eight respectively. And while our council receives a fleet of aid cars apiece paid for by taxpayer dollars, San Francisco council members get an assigned parking spot. While we wait with bated breath to see if the council members will take their voluntary 10% pay cut following suit to Dennis Zine, the only member who thus far has volunteered, we should be asking for so much more. 25% two cars and 10 staffers should be the rally cry from every laid-off teacher and librarian. 25% two cars and 10 staffers should be the rally cry from every furloughed city employee. 25% two cars and 10 staffers should be the rally cry from every taxpaying citizen. Imagine the stack of resumes that would be received for a job opening with a salary of $135,000, two company cars, a large staff, and an expansive expense account. To call that a sacrifice is a slap in the face to every Angelino who is bearing the brunt of this financial crisis. You should all be embarrassed and ashamed every time you cash that check. Marie Antoinette, anyone?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog in San Pedro. Mr., oh, before Mr. Dog, hold on one second. Mr. Smith?
...information because it is brought up frequently. The L.A. City Council's salary is set by the people of Los Angeles under charter change in 1990. We have no decision-making in it. We don't choose it. We didn't pick it. Also, the city of Los Angeles is the only city council in America that is a full-time city council, forbidden outside income. Those council members in other cities, New York, Chicago, Philadelphia, San Diego, San Francisco, are allowed to be outside private persons. They have income. Most of them are attorneys, and their council positions are extra income to them. We live only on this. We're not allowed honorariums. We're not allowed extra income. And we are totally different than everybody. And that was a system that was established in the 1991 charter by the people of Los Angeles who voted that system in. Thank you.
And just, and one other clarification. It's not just Mr. Zine. The 10% was given back in the budget that was just passed as well. Matt Dowd is, sorry, Zuma Dog and then Matt Dowd are our next speakers, and after that will be Phil Genojon back here in council chambers. Mr. Dog?
Yes. Yes, thank you, San Pedro. If there's one thing Zuma Dog hates, it's a waste of taxpayer money. Matt Dowd, Zuma Dog, bringing a tour of Los Angeles here to San Pedro. First of all, I'd like the council to tell Greg Smith the meaning of 50 words or less. Secondly, if any city council members happen to have a ticket for tonight's Barack Obama fundraiser, I'm very hungry. I could use the plate of food, y'all. And I'm also very happy that Carmen Trutanich is city attorney. And thank you, city council, for listening to Zuma Dog, who wears the emblem of Trutanich. Yesterday, when I said, "Of course you can't pass the billboard moratorium. We got a new city attorney." We see the shift of power going to the people. Thank you so much. And with all due respect, I'd like to come up with a name for council members. And with all due respect, after $7 billion in losses in pension money, I'd like to say, "City council, you losers. You're just city council losers. You lost $7 billion in pension money." And with all due respect, I think that William H. Jackson should be stepping down too. I want serious pressure from Villarreal to tell William H. Jackson, Weatherly Capital, longtime attorney, who Villarreal appointed him CRA chairman. So what happens? You have the Weatherly Capital pension people that have the money that's, they're being investigated, okay, all up and down, all across the country. You take their guy, you put him into the CRA as chairman, then the CRA starts putting pension money into CRA projects, okay? And I'm very disappointed with council member Wendy Grue using her council status to raise money for New York Attorney General Andrew Cuomo. If you read my blog, zoomatimes.com, you'll find out that he's not the type of person you want to be on the bandwagon with. And I'd like to tell the billboard people, Carmen Trutanich is the new city attorney. For those of you who think that you can violate the 90-day billboard moratorium, we got a moratorium in place that has teeth, you will be prosecuted. We got a new sheriff in town, Carmen Trutanich, and to the mayor, you will be legally compliant.
Our next speaker is Matt Dowd. Thank you, sir. After that is Phil Genojon. Mr. Dog? Also in San Pedro.
Yeah, thank you. Reset the clock. I already lost a few seconds with the delay. I'm Matt Dowd. I appear in the, you can see me in the latest Steven Segal video. It's up on YouTube.
Sir, if you could keep the things that are relevant to city business, please. Thank you.
He was at the Carmen Trutanich victory party, which I attended along with council member Janice Hahn and councilman Dennis Zine and Zuma Dog. So it's total city business.
I'm sorry, sir, that isn't something the city, a private party even for an election isn't something that the city has jurisdiction over. So if you could keep the things we do have jurisdiction over, thank you very much.
Let's, let's talk about why Jack Weiss, the council member who's sitting right now, who's probably not sitting, let's talk about why he lost. And, and as a councilman, it reflects on his performance as a councilman in his district. There's a massive backlash, the billboards, there's all, you know, the housing, the density, the traffic. So Jack Weiss lost. So he is a loser. He's a loser. And I think the city attorney can confirm for me or say nothing as a confirmation. Thank you. And there'll probably be some more losers soon, too. But what, you know, see, Barack Obama's in town. So first of all, let's talk about voting. Let's talk about Greg Smith. The voters voted about the whole Prop 8 thing as well. So all those people, you need to get out to Barack Obama and protest out there. Get out on the streets. Because we are civil rights advocates, but now we're, now we're fiscal activists. Since the city of Los Angeles lost $7 billion, all the fire and police people who are retired and put money in the fund, you ought to check the city's not going to declare bankruptcy and take all your money.
Thank you. Next speaker is Phil Genojon here in council chambers. After that will be Ruben Murillo. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Phil Genojon. I'm the public relations spokesman for a political organization called Westside Republicans. And I'm here to provide a public service announcement to my fellow concerned Angelinos. This Friday, May 29th, the Westside Republicans and other concerned Angelinos are going to be protesting outside the offices of Congressman Henry Waxman. Congressman Waxman is one of the authors of pending cap and trade legislation that, if enacted, will have a devastating effect on the American economy. $1.9 trillion in new taxes on energy. Does this sound like a good idea to any of you? I mean, to understand the ideology of cap and trade, you have to buy into the fallacious arguments that the United States has the ability to control and regulate CO2 emissions. None of the proponents of cap and trade have been able to explain how the United States of America, with 5% of the world's population, can control global CO2 when countries like China and India are building hundreds of new factories every year. This is typical nonsense from the liberal left. They continue to make promises that if you will just give them more and more control over every single aspect of your life, that they will be able to create a perfect utopia here on Earth. History has shown that governments that try to do this usually end up creating a hell on Earth for their citizens. Make no mistake, cap and trade will cap and trade. It will cap American economic growth. It will trade American jobs to other countries with less restrictive regulations. Join Westside Republicans as we protest this destructive assault on the American economy. Friday, May 29th, noon, 8436 West 3rd Street. It's near the Beverly Center, 3rd and La Cienega, just a few yards away. My other announcement is, Westside Republicans, we have a dinner on June 10th. If you would like to meet Tom Campbell, who's running for governor of California, or if you'd like to meet David Denning, who's running for U.S. Congress, please attend our dinner. Go see our website, westsiderepublicans.com for more information. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, we do have to keep to things that we have direct jurisdiction over. Unfortunately, this isn't a public announcement section, but if you can keep to that, Mr. Genojon, we appreciate your, your tone, and we appreciate your comments that are on point. Ruben Murillo is our next speaker, and then Richard Robinson will be our final speaker. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ruben Murillo. I'm a delegate for the State Central Committee, and I am here to call attention to the apparent breach contract between City Hall and its constituents when it comes to CD's 14 representation. By that, I mainly, you know, calling attention to the fact that Mr. Huizar is actually in support of El Mercado's application for hard liquor and further zoning variances without any adherence to the previous 69 conditions that were imposed on him. We are really unsatisfied by our representation. Mr. Huizar has actually turned his back on the community and on the law enforcement personnel, namely in the vice unit, who are there to protect and to serve, and is actually ignoring the fact that there's 32 outstanding permits with building and safety that have either been allowed to expire or he is not complying with. This creates a public safety issue and lowers the quality of life for us in rural heights. Now, this is indicative of a rotten political machine by one person. Now, for the record, Mr. Rosado or Pedro Rosado has actually contributed $8,000 to Antonio Villarreal and $1,000 to Jose Huizar. How else can you explain that a councilman who's sworn to uphold the law is ignoring it, turning his back on his constituents, ignoring its police department, and not enforcing its own laws when it comes to building and safety? This is a liability issue. This issue is now at the Plum Commission. This is a call to action for anybody that actually cares about upholding the law. Please visit us at carpe diemfilms.org for further details. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Robinson.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson.
Good morning.
Neighborhood organizer. Good morning, sir. I'm networking a community outreach program. I call it simply COP. Someday, citywide, I hope to have implemented. And a lot of windows in the city will see a sticker, COP, with an 800 number. My brother's a detective sergeant retiring 70 years ago. When he lost the X amount of police, he almost became a police chief. He's now moving into Los Angeles. I believe that we can be very effective, particularly at the inception of our Foley security. My stepmother's maiden name. What, sir, I anticipate being able to do is to initially help Mr., I say his name with a great deal of affection, Robert Yu, Taiwanese. I can't describe Mr. Yu. You have to meet him. I met him one, 20 years ago. I was awakened by this little Asian guy who simply didn't care who was at his motel. He's going to improve the place. He came in without knocking. He's installing, that was 20 years ago. He's fantastic. But over the years, it's an abiding deep affection that we have. Incidentally, I have a first cousin that's Chinese. We adopted her about 40 years ago in Exeter, Michigan, when her parents were killed in a tragic automobile accident, when she was an infant. But, sir, if you will give consideration in the future to what I believe is a problem that can be less problematic at that motel at 1730 North La Brea. And thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I'll close our general public comment for today. With that, we'll go ahead and take up the items that have been called special. Mr. Reyes, did you want to take number 19 out of order? I'd like to recognize the great chairman of our Planning, Land, and Management Committee, Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is one of those weeks where we engage some of our policies that have a direct impact on the quality of life. I want to thank the chairman of the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, Herb Weston. Together, we have been able to put forth for your review the proposal of a citywide mixed-income housing ordinance. And to meet that goal, I want to say thanks to the chair, Chairman Weston, as well as those who have been part of this process for several years now. Just most recently, we had a technical advisory group made up of different types of stakeholders. We had developers who are for-profit, developers who are nonprofit. We had folks who were involved in the community. We had advocates. So again, there's been a whole series of stakeholders through the planning commission meetings, through the planning committee, and now we are at this stage. So that, I'd like to ask the director of the Housing Department and the directors of the Planning Department, as well as the city attorney, to come to the desk and give us an overview of what's before you, colleagues. And I invite my co-chair, Mr. Weston, if you had any words at this moment. Mr. Weston?
Thank you, Madam President, and to my dear friend and colleague, Ed Reyes. This, to say the least, is a very challenging thing that we attempt to do. But just because it's challenging doesn't mean that it cannot be done. I am optimistic that this time around, we will develop a policy that functions and that helps fill the need, the void that this city has. It has been a pleasure working with Mr. Reyes and all of you, working with all of the stakeholders from the development community and from the advocate community. And I think that, that we're close. As Mr. Reyes said, this was attempted several years ago, proved to be very difficult, proved to be very challenging. But I really think that this time, Mr. Reyes, we've got a legitimate shot at making this happen. Because of the work that we did in our joint committees, this is just the next phase. We're going to do this through a thought-out, step-by-step process that protects the city legally. And at the end of the day, I believe we will be able to gain a win-win situation. So, Mr. Reyes, the game is afoot.
Mr. Alacon, followed by Mr. Garcetti, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Did you, did you want to ask some questions first? Why don't we let him do, have the Housing Department do the question?
Yes.
Madam President, if we can have the presentation of the material in front of us, and it'll give more substance to our colleagues so that they can ask the questions pertinent. So if we may have him make the presentation.
Good. Thank you very much. I'm Gail Goldberg, planning director. I'm here today with Yolanda Chavez from the Housing Department and Mary Decker from the city attorney's office. And we would like to also thank council members Reyes and Weston for their leadership, and we too share their optimism and their commitment. Last December, you asked each of us to work together to bring back to you a mixed-income ordinance and present it to you with policy... ordinance and present it to you with policy provisions that you laid out. You also asked us to form a task force, and the Joint Plum and Housing Committee designated 19 people to serve on a task force to help us, to advise us on financial feasibility. Over the past five months, the Technical Advisory Committee met five times and came up with a set of performas that they all agreed upon, that we will be using to test the alternatives that we will bring forward to you within a couple of months. We also, during this period of time, hired a couple of consultants to help us. Kathy Head from Kaiser Marston and Barbara Kraut from Gofarb and Littman. Barbara Kraut is a specialist, an attorney who specializes in affordable housing and inclusionary housing. Because we were committed as staff and as a council to prepare for you the best ordinance that we could and the most legally defensible ordinance that we could, because we are very committed to having an ordinance that will actually work and can be implemented in our city. We also had to look very carefully at the CEQA issues involved with a proposed ordinance. There are complications that have to do with how a new ordinance that requires mixed income works with the existing density bonus law through the state. And so it is very important that we carefully look at those issues, how they fit together, and what the CEQA implications are. So based on the work that we have done and the consultant work, we have come to-- we went to a joint meeting of Plum and the Housing Committee last week and brought to them a set of recommendations that these consultants came up with that would guide us toward the most legally defensible ordinance that we could have. And we asked them to look at those recommendations and give us some confirmation that that's the direction we should be going on over the next few months. The Plum Committee and the Housing Committee, with a quorum available only at the Housing Committee, actually approved those recommendations and added one to make sure that we can efficiently and effectively enforce and monitor our ordinance. So today, we are coming to you to ask you to review that set of recommendations, and I'm going to read them very quickly to you.
And before you do that, Gail, if we could-- there's a little bit of noise and the council members can't hear. If we could ask any staff who have-- and there's some on the side there. Shhh. If you want to take them outside. Thank you.
Thank you. So the instruction will be to us as staff to go forward over the next three months and create an ordinance that meets the following parameters that have been laid out by our consultants and confirmed by our joint committee meetings. That the set-aside requirement for rental and/or for sale include the following categories of affordability: moderate, low income, very low income, and/or extremely low income, or some combination thereof. That we also explore incentives for developers beyond those already available through current city law and state law. That the options to meet our requirements would also include an in-lu fee, onsite, offsite, within a defined proximity to the project, and purchasing of affordable covenants as prioritized by the Housing Department. That the ordinance be citywide, that it have a minimum project size to start between 20 and 50 units, that it be mandatory, and that it ensure that the ordinance developed can be efficiently and effectively enforced and monitored. The other recommendation made is to request that the mayor's office set aside $400,000 in CDBG monies to fund any studies related to the mixed-income housing ordinance, and for the most part, that would be environmental studies. And that you adopt a timeline for the initial environmental study, as proposed by the Planning Department and attached. And that timeline would bring us back with alternatives for you to view by mid-September with some preliminary indications of the environmental work that would be involved. And that concludes our report today. Our two consultants were not available to be here today. They were both out of town. But hopefully, the three of us can answer most of your questions, and if need be, we'll get back to you with detailed answers. So we thank you very much for your attention in this matter.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, you want--
Yes, Madam President. Do you know there were some folks who had wanted to speak in public hearing, and perhaps we should hear from them before the council discussion begins?
Mr. Travis, did you have anything else to add on behalf of the Housing Department? City Attorney's Office?
No.
Okay.
We will then have a public hearing. I'll call the first four names. Maria Elena Duraso, followed by Pastor Ryan Bell, followed by Tony Vasquez, by Olivia Lambert-Bush. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Maria Elena Duraso, Secretary-Treasurer of the LA Federation of Labor. And I too want to thank councilmembers Weston and Reyes for your leadership and for helping to drive this. In fact, a few months ago, the mixed-income housing policy passed by unanimous vote at our Federation's Executive Board and hundreds of delegates at our monthly moving-- monthly meeting, because workers have been forced to move out of this city and even the county because they cannot afford to live here anymore. They're moving to Riverside San Bernardino to be able to find affordable housing. This might be an immediate remedy to their housing issues, but in the long run, we all suffer with increased pollution into our air, traffic, and less time with our families. For our lower-wage workers, janitors, security officers, and hotel workers, the issue of affordable housing is even greater. I am reminded of Blanca, a full-time janitor who cleans office buildings in downtown LA. She's been doing this for 15 years. Each day, she spends countless hours commuting back and forth from her home and her job because she can't afford to live where she works. Five years ago, her landlord evicted her because too many people lived in her apartment. Today, she lives with her sister and three others in a one-bedroom apartment in order to afford the rent. For Blanca and others like her, this policy is a must. So we urge you to support the housing policy framework that is before you today. We are together-- I'm to wave to you this-- copies of over 100 letters from community-based organizations and labor, and also to say that on our behalf, our priorities under this framework are that it be citywide, that it be robust, set aside enough to make a difference, and of course, mixed income, and to protect our rent-controlled housing. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duraso, Pastor Ryan Bell, Tony Vasquez, Olivia Lambert-Bush, and Helen Garrett. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for taking the time to hear me this morning, councilmembers. My name is Ryan Bell. I'm the pastor of the Hollywood Seventh Avenue Church in Council District Four. I also live in Los Feliz in Council District Four. I and my congregation are members of LA Voice, which is a coalition of 24 congregations throughout the city of Los Angeles, organizing on behalf of our members on a variety of issues from public safety to, of course, this issue of affordable housing. We're also members of the larger LA-- Housing LA Coalition, many of whom are with me today here in the room. It seems like of late, part of my job as pastor has become that of caseworker, to kind of keep my members housed. In the last six months, three of my members have gone from being renters to being what I would call homeless. They live out of their cars or surf on couches, and various other members who are three and four to a one- or two-bedroom apartment. Six others that I counted off the top of my head this morning are on the verge of losing their apartment if they don't either come up with another job that they-- to replace the one they just lost. Or some additional roommate will be also losing their housing as well. The bottom line is, in LA, as we all know, there's a basic inequity between the income that people make and the cost of the housing that is available to them. And so that is why we have been working so hard to support the initiatives that are before you today. I have here with me the hard work of the Acorn Organization, hundreds of letters to various ones of you councilmembers here today. 170 of these were delivered to my councilmember, Councilmember Labonge, yesterday. Others will be arriving to others of you later this week, asking you to support, urging you to support the hard work of the ladies that are in front of you today and the other hard work that's been going on, just to create an ordinance that works for our city, that really supports the people who keep this city moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Vasquez, Olivia Lambert-Bush, Helen Garrett, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, Madam Chair and councilmembers. My name is Tony Vasquez, and I'm actually here to speak a little bit more from my experience as a former councilmember in the city of Santa Monica, where we had the opportunity to pass a mixed-income housing ordinance. And at the beginning, it was very difficult and very tough because many of the folks, especially in what we call the Pico neighborhood in the city of Santa Monica, felt it was all going to be dumped in their neighborhood. But as Councilmember Reyes could attest to, he was one of the members then working with the housing group in the city of Santa Monica. They created some of the best housing in the Third Street Promenade. For some of you that had the opportunity to visit the Third Street Promenade, many people don't know that on that commercial strip, three blocks, there's actually housing up on the third and fourth floor of some of those commercial units that are down, the retail units down below. And we did it quite a bit, not only in the downtown area, but then also in the north end of the city. It took a while. At first, a lot of it was, you might say, dumped into the lower ends of the city, but after many, many years, it finally got spread out throughout the city. And I think one of the things, if I could just kind of caution you as you move forward, hopefully you don't make the same mistake we made, and that is to allow developers to come in and build their projects in the areas that they want, and then give you what they call an in-lu fee, and then you're stuck with those funds trying to build affordable housing throughout the city. And in many cases, the in-lu fee isn't sufficient to do that. So what ends up happening is that they're buying their way out of building the affordable housing. So I would encourage you to move forward. If you do an in-lu fee, do it within a radius. Sometimes I know it's difficult to make it pencil out, so the housing actually gets built onsite, but if it's in within the radius, then I don't think you'll have the problem that we had, where people were just giving us the fee and then building their housing, market-rate housing, and not really complying with the affordable housing piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia? Olivia Lambert-Bush. Okay. Then Helen Garrett, and then Veronica Perez Becker, and then Kendra Moore.
I don't know what time it is. I've been here so long. I am representing Acorn. I am representing Acorn. Acorn. My name is Olivia Lambert-Bush, not related to King George. I live in the Hollywood sector, and I want to congratulate the committee that is working and that you're going to get $400,000 to work on this committee. But I want to beg you, pezible, beseech you, to work on this as soon as possible. This morning, while I was getting ready to come to the meeting, my dentist called me. And I said, "Well, what happened?" He said, "I want you to come to the office right now." I said, "But I can't come to the office right now because I'm going to a meeting where we're going to try to get mixed-income apartments." He said, "Well, I just want to let you know that the governor has just cut your insurance for your dentist." So I don't have any more insurance with the dentist. Last month, April, I received another letter where they raised the rent again where I live. So I don't have a lot of time to wait to move into one of the apartments that you're going to get. Because where I live right now, on 510 North Harvard, they have been living there for about 27 or 30 years. They want to get me out and get someone in that could pay $1,500, which I can't pay because I only get $800. So now look at this case. I lose my dentist because Schwarzenegger took it away. They raised the rent. So the time that you're going to take to study this, please, hit me and I talk to a lot of people just like me in my senior citizen, that we have no other way to go. I can't start over again. I don't pay my taxes. I don't work. I work with the community. I-- oh, my-- okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Olivia. Helen Garrett. Then it will be followed by Veronica Perez Becker, Kendra Moore, and Michael McHugh.
My name is Helen Garrett. I'm a proud member of Power. I shared with some of you people in committee the fact that I had not ever made it into the middle class and had worked all of my life since I was 18. And now I am 68 years old, and I need some help, and there are many thousands of old ladies just like me who need that help. We are asking you, the politicians, we are asking you, to help us now and provide a strong mixed-income housing ordinance. We want housing for the lowest of the low, the extremely low, the very low, the low-income people. We are not interested in housing for wealthy people. We must have it now. There's a lot of us who will come after you if we don't get it. Not only that, we want you to preserve the official-- the housing that we have right now, and we don't want that built over by developers. Get us the ordinance we need. Make it strong. Make it now, and stop politicking. Get it done.
Good morning, councilmembers. Veronica Perez Becker with the Central City Association. We applaud the city's efforts to encourage housing production at all income levels, especially for our middle class who keep our city's economic engine running. However, we would like to underscore that a feasible mandate must be paired with the appropriate incentives to offset the costs of producing affordable housing. A sound proposal must be economically feasible in any market, and this can only occur if the right carrots are on the table for builders to utilize. We are encouraged to see that the city is ready to perform an environmental review. However, we are concerned that the study is being commenced before any concrete proposal has been presented. The initial proposal should be presented with enough time to have significant give-and-take with all the stakeholders, and we ask that the city continue to work with us to identify appropriate incentives as we move forward in crafting the details of the policy. Thank you.
Kendra Moore, Michael McHugh, Phil Jenner John, and then we will go to Matt Dowd and Suma Dak.
Good morning. My name is Kendra Moore, and I live in the Holiday Venice Apartments. I'm a member of Power. Today, I'm here to talk about the mixed-income housing ordinance. We, the people of Los Angeles, elect you officers for these jobs. One day, being black and Latino is not going to be enough for election. So we, the people of Los Angeles, is asking that you need to get in there, represent your districts, work for the people of Los Angeles in your districts. We're asking that we need a strong mixed-income housing ordinance. We need it quickly. And what I mean by strong, I mean that we need a strong mixed-income ordinance for very low, extremely low, and low and moderate for all people to have a place. Housing is a human's right. Everyone should be able to afford to live all over Los Angeles, in every place that they choose to live. We need a strong mixed-income housing ordinance. Please, do the right thing. Vote for mixed-income housing today. Pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael McHugh.
Very good morning to you, Madam President and councilmembers. My name is Michael McHugh. I'm with the Studio City Neighborhood Council, and we wanted to advise you, because as written right now, the Studio City Neighborhood Council opposes the proposed mandatory mixed-income housing ordinance. Not that it's not needed, but we have specific reasons. Not one of them-- the mayor's staff has acknowledged that as written, it will not work in the city of varied urban, suburban, and rural communities. city of varied urban, suburban, and rural communities. And we do not agree to several of the changes to the goals of the housing element. We object to the revision to Policy 2.4.3, which removes the preservation of the maintenance of the prevailing scale and character of stable residential neighborhoods from Objective 2.4. We do not agree that only unique neighborhoods are worthy of preservation, or that any preservation must be balanced with facilitating new development. It may, in fact, mean that additional development should be permitted unless it is in scale with the neighborhood. We object to the deletion of the phrase "preservation of our neighborhoods" and "maintenance of the quality of life in residential areas" from Goal 2 in the housing element. We do not agree with the revised goal, which is simply to create a safe, sustainable neighborhood. Not specific enough. We object to the deletion from Objective 2.1 of the words "provide for adequate population." We consider these words to be protective of our neighborhoods from overpopulation that would strain the infrastructure to the breaking point. We question the propriety of the policies in the housing element that call for eliminating zoning code provisions, such as in Policy 4.1.6. The zoning code provides a transparent process for evaluation of projects and their impact on the neighborhood based on their merits in each location. Now, the Studio City Neighborhood Council supports TOPA, the Tenant Option to Purchase Agreement. Tenant co-ops are an affordable housing... Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Jennerjohn, and then we'll go out to San Pedro.
I think there was a mix-up. I put in card on 20 and 39. I didn't put it on 19.
I'm sorry. I put it in the item, incorrect item. Matt Dowd. And San Pedro.
Matt, come on, they're calling you. Matt, I'll go instead of Matt. Matt's coming. I'll go while he's coming. You ready for me? You ready for Uncle MC Suma Dog, here to break it down for the City of Los Angeles regarding the citywide mixed-income housing ordinance? First of all, you'll ask, "Well, gee, why do we need mixed housing? Why not just have all the rich people live in one area and the people that serve them live 90 miles out in the outskirts?" Because I'm here to tell you, two-class system doesn't work, people. You can only create a community by having the people that serve the community, like the teachers, the police, the workers, the clerks, the waiters, everybody that makes the city tick. Well, they live within the community, and that's how it becomes a community. The City of Los Angeles has failed to embrace that. What's happened is through their housing policy, of which Mr. Herb Weston has been chair and Eric R. Siddy sits on in the city council, they've approved nothing but luxury, upscale housing projects. Once again, now the city coming and passing laws where we already had rules and regulations to prevent against this kind of thing, but they always slip out of the affordable housing component. They always turn a blind eye, just like with the clear-channel billboards, turn a blind eye, "Oh, developer, forget about that, about the affordable housing stuff." So what have they done? They've gone all upscale luxury in the City of Los Angeles. Nobody could afford the housing. They're forced to the outskirts. Then you have density and the whole situation. I've been telling you, when I ran for mayor, the biggest thing, they like to hear nice, sexy issues, the biggest thing, the City of Los Angeles has destroyed the fabric and character of the city by not allowing people to afford to live here, and then it pushes everybody out and businesses can't work here. And now look at the problems, people. And again, you went all upscale. Now, here's what I'm warning about. So now they're coming and doing this little measure. I'm here to tell you something, people. There's nothing good that comes through these agendas. They always make it look good. It's 99% good, but they put the loophole in there that allows everything to go out the window. So I'm here to say that people need to be a watchdog to make sure when they put this ordinance in effect, that it's actually followed, because they've already ruined the city, and we got traffic and density and all kinds of problems, and you did not...
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Suma Dog. Matt Dowd.
Matt Dowd? Matt, are you here? Matt?
Matt, your clock is running.
I'll go get him. Keep the clock running. He's not here.
Okay. Thank you very much. That public hearing is now closed, and we will go back to Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, members, I'm very pleased to stand in support of developing an ordinance that will accomplish the missions before us. I want to thank Councilmember Reyes and Weston for their leadership on this issue. There are some concerns that obviously communities have. As a representative of a community that is working class, I want to make sure that the burden of locating the affordable housing is not placed on poorer communities that already have highly dense affordable housing. So with regard to the in-lug fee, I would want to ensure that it is used in the proximity of the project unless it's in Westwood or something. So the point being that I actually would say that if the project is going to be in an area that is poor, that the in-lug fee should not be used in the proximity of that project. It should be used elsewhere. We have to balance the responsibilities of affordable housing throughout Los Angeles. And the Section 8 program historically demonstrated that you could develop affordable housing in very wealthy neighborhoods that was relatively unnoticed. In fact, a huge portion of Section 8 housing in the San Fernando Valley, or the largest area of Section 8 housing, was in Chatsworth. Very nice housing, mostly senior-oriented. And I think we should incentivize the affordable housing in communities that are not carrying their fair share of the burden today, and disincentivize the use of communities that are already saturated. Secondly, I want to ensure, we just had a court case where, relative to the implementation of SB 1818, that was thrown back, and I just want to ensure, and I know your recommendations mention and imply that this ordinance will be crafted in a way that it is sensitive to CEQA and also SB 1818 implementation relative to the course decision. So I just wanted to be stated, if you would, relative to that case, if you can, how this ordinance will prevent the kind of occurrence that we saw with our development of the ordinance relative to SB 1818.
I'm inviting the city attorney who is dealing with that case to come to the table.
Hold my time, please. I got six seconds.
Cherry Kaufman, Masiya City Attorney's Office. First of all, the SB 1818 lawsuit is not final, and there's no judgment yet, so we don't know the ultimate outcome of that case. But it's still left, state law is still completely intact, and only addressed a few portions of the city's ordinance. So when we get the mixed-income ordinance, we will, of course, be looking at the final outcome of the case and make sure that if it turns out that there are weaknesses, that those weaknesses are not repeated here.
Well, let me just say for the record that I essentially concur with the judge's statements about the need to respect CEQA in the process. So I just hope that as we proceed with this ordinance, that we are very sensitive to that issue. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weston, for your hard work, as well as our planning department, our housing department, and our city attorney. And a special thanks to the community, to the coalition that has brought us back here again. And just to correct one of our public speakers that came at the end, and we appreciate, of course, Mr. Dog's endorsement of this, but there's been too many fights that we've been in together, and this is not about me, this is really about the community. There have been over 1,000 units of housing in Hollywood, over 6,000 units citywide. There's been too much affordable housing that we've built against the opposition of many people who don't want affordable housing, or think that it's ugly, or think they don't want those people in their community not to set the record straight about how strong housing LA has been in the last decade, who've put an Affordable Housing Trust Fund front and center that was the largest in the country, both in absolute terms and in per capita terms, and inspired things like a National Housing Trust Fund. The protections that we've done together to close loopholes of illegal evictions, to ensure that tenants who are dislocated have a higher amount of money. All of those battles that we've fought are real public policy that has happened in here. And it's happened in here because there's been a coalition of a strong council, together with a strong community, an impatient and impassioned community, that has come together with religious institutions and labor and elected officials from other cities who show us, "You don't have to be scared about these policies. They do work. They can work." We've been together on those ramparts. We've been together on those battle lines. We protested together. We've rallied together, and we've had many successes. But one glaring hole that we have in the City of Los Angeles is we still don't have, and excuse me for being old-school, an inclusionary zoning policy, a policy that mandates that when there is housing that is built in this city, that a portion of that be built for folks that are working class as well. Now, there's an interest in doing that because it's the right thing, but even if you don't care about those people and you want to say that those aren't you, you have an interest in this if you're stuck in traffic today. If you live in the west side of Los Angeles where there's five jobs for every one unit of housing, you have an interest in this. If you drive in as one of those workers who spends 90 minutes or two hours and comes so early you sleep in your car so that you can then begin work after that, because it's the only time to drive in with only two hours of traffic, then you have an interest in this. If your kids have asthma because of the air quality that's been in effect of our poor planning policies of the past, you have an interest in this. And if you're somebody who is opening a business and wants to attract a workforce that actually wants to come to our city, you have an interest in this. So from the business community, and from the labor community, from a residential community, let's figure out a way not to rally around no, but to rally around yes, and to have a strong inclusionary zoning policy. Now, let's go back in time, because if we had passed this, let's say, in 2004, we would have thousands of units of housing right now for working-class people before the economic downturn, when land prices were going up sometimes 50% a year. And the only adjustment that would have happened is that some of the land prices would have gone up less quickly. Those landowners still would have turned a healthy profit. There's a piece of land in Hollywood, in my own district, that somebody bought for $800,000 in the 80s that was sold for $35 million. So if that had have been sold for $25 million, I think they still would have been pretty well off. That's if we had failed to do any of the incentives that should make this all else equal. And I agree with Mr. Alarcon, and Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry have been eloquent voices on this as well. We can't have a policy that squanders the money off to the side and says that's still just going to be built in districts like CD 13, and 1, and 9, and 10, and 8. We have to have a fair share throughout, and so we need to design a policy that keeps that money in those neighborhoods, because that's the point. Traffic never improves if we segregate housing off and jobs off to different parts, and that has to be done right now. And I'm already over, so I'll close on this, but I want a strong policy. I want one that has a percentage that actually makes an impact, because when we look at how many units of housing we still need, having built 6,300 units of housing with Affordable Housing Trust Fund, having gotten another couple thousand without using our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that's about 8,000 units. Now, anybody who wants to compare that to the previous decade, it is head and shoulders above that. But if you talk to an average Angelino right now, and if you go to a church or a synagogue and you talk to parishioners and you ask, "How are things right now? Is it a pretty easy housing market for you? Are you able to find dignified housing? Do you have enough space?" And for me, when I walk door-to-door every month, as I do in my own community, in the most densely populated district in this city, when those apartment doors open and you realize that eight people are living in a one-bedroom apartment, or you see three families scrambled into where one should, this shouldn't have only been done in 2004. It should have been done long before that. Now is the time to do it. I trust our two chairs, Mr. Weston and Mr. Reyes, to deliver something. Those who might have hesitated out of fear because last time it was framed in a way that said, "This is going to ruin your neighborhood," and I do think we need some answers to the questions that were raised about the character. I'll just close on that. We can do this. We will do this, and I want to thank the community for rallying. If it's not done this year, shame on all of us. We will deliver. Thank you.
Ms. Han, followed by Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Roosevelt.
Thank you. Wasn't that a great speech by Eric Garcetti? It was great. I really don't want to follow it, but you know, I am here today to say that you're right. I mean, for years, we've been talking about a mixed-income housing process here in Los Angeles, and it is way past the time to act, way past the time to act. And you brought that up, Mr. Garcetti, by saying if we only had passed it earlier, by now, we would have had a number of affordable homes for people to live in. And there are a lot of good reasons to support this, but I do feel particularly sensitive to the 2 million working men and women in Los Angeles, 50% of whom make less than $25,000 a year, or about $2,000 a month. And the average rent is about $1,600 a month. You don't need to be a math major to figure out that clearly it does not work. People are not making the ends meet. And we have lost a significant number of rent-controlled apartments in the last two years due to demolitions and condo conversions. There just are not any more affordable housing units out there for people. Yesterday, in my office, I met with a hotel worker who has struggled to find a place for his family to live. He had to move his family in with his brother's family in one small apartment, and then the rent there went up. And he once again was forced to move, and this broke my heart. He was forced to separate his family. He had to send his oldest son to live with the grandmother because they could not all live in the same place. That is not family values. That is not American values. That is not what we believe in. And I've said this before, you should not have the working poor. That should not be in the same sentence. People who work hard should be at least well enough off to afford a place to live. And you know that I have been fighting for years to get fair pay and fair wages and health benefits for working people, but I now realize that's not good enough, because even with the living wage, there's not a lot of living to do if you can't afford a place to live and keep your family together. So I really want to thank the working group that put together the guidelines that are before us today. I'm supportive of this, and I urge all of us to move forward and take a stand on creating mixed-income housing in Los Angeles. The time is now. We have nothing to fear except a better, more livable City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Parks is our next speaker, and then Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me just ask Ms. Gilbert, one of the concerns I have, and we've gone back and forth on this type of ordinance for a number of years, is I have a district that is second-largest number of homeless people in the city. We have the largest number of Section 8 housing. We have probably in the top three of unauthorized housing. And when we look at the kinds of levels of housing that's been built for the last 30 years, we get special needs housing, student housing, senior housing, and the lowest-income housing, and we are basically very concentrated in a small area, but yet we rarely ever get people that build market rate. And when we look at this the way it's outlined, it appears that that single developer that shows up with a market rate, that we're going to say, with all these things going on, add into your market rate additional affordable housing, which for our district, we're the reverse. We should have an incentive to bring people to bring market rate versus the reverse. And that's the kind of issue, I think, I've tried to put an ordinance together that fits the entire city, we're forgetting about the historical perspective. If we were starting a city from the beginning, and we had a blank canvas, and everybody was running at the same pace, philosophically, this would be a good way to go. But if we start in 2009, after 100 years of neglect in certain parts of the city, and then some parts of the city have minimal or no affordable, this appears that we're putting the people that have been neglected further behind. And I just need you to balance those issues.
Thank you very much, councilmember. This is an issue that we have talked about a great deal, and I expect that we will be looking carefully at evaluating communities throughout the city to ascertain what communities and neighborhoods might already have an over-concentration. And one of the things that we will look at is the potential for having areas that might be exempted or some other option provided so that we can incentivize in some, you know, distinct areas, a market-rate housing, because that is what we need to create in some communities to create that balance that we've all talked about. So that is an option that we will look at, and hopefully we'll bring back something that will address your needs.
Because I think what I'd like to make sure, that we're putting an ordinance together that's going to positively impact the city, not an ordinance that gets eight votes, because we might be after a horse and we get a cow. And so that's the issue. The other thing I think that's important for us is that we look at the committee report and the different reports. The one piece that I'm concerned is missing is that we've not analyzed what's there before we get started. So if we don't know what's in each community, how do we then start in 2009 and '10 and say, "We're going to wipe the slate clean and move from this point," and we have no idea of what are the issues in that community?
If I could add, I think part of the analysis that we're going to be conducting is exactly that. So for example, in your district, we were very much aware... So for example, in your district, we were very much aware of all the affordable housing projects that have been financed in the last, I would say, 10 years, also where of the number of closures in your district, because you're one of the districts that's been most impacted. So that would really be part of the analysis in terms of moving forward on an ordinance that makes sense.
Okay. Let me just say one thing. On looking at the committee report, item 2C, as one of the speakers mentioned earlier, I think the In-Lua fee gives people an opt-out that basically puts money in a fund and doesn't get housing. And I think the other issue in looking at purchasing affordable covenants allows them to secure existing housing in communities that already have the housing, but doesn't create affordable housing in the district that they're building their market rate. And so those are two issues that I think allows people too easily to move by giving funds away from building what we want them to do, unless you make the opt-out so expensive to where it's double the amount of building a unit, that they'll never take that option. But to say you can put money in a fund unless it is very closely aligned where they're building the market rate, or opt-out by securing covenants in areas in which market rate is being built and they have no covenants, so they're securing covenants in other neighborhoods, those are ways in which people can move beyond, below the radar and not really do what the ordinance is intended.
We agree with you, and I think part of the challenge will be to develop an ordinance that whatever offsets or options are available are valued so that we understand what we need to do, so that it makes it feasible, actually, I think, for developers to build these units onsite. Because, as you know, ideally, that would be the best solution. Because even with an In-Lu fee that could help us build the unit, as you know, being able to build it within that area, or have enough money to finance a project that comes through that area may take a couple of years, or if we make it feasible for the developer to build onsite, that would really be the best solution, and ensure that we're getting the units very quickly.
I know I'm really a little ragged. Two quick points. One of the things that helps poorer communities more than anything else, if you invest in our infrastructure and you invest in land assemblies, developers will come. And that's an issue which we see over and over again. And I think the other issue I wanted to mention is that some communities shouldn't be put in a situation like we are, where the first time in 20 years, we get Quimby funds and have a parade where other people have Quimby funds that are coming out of their ears. And so it also deteriorates the parkland and a lot of other issues in communities that can least afford the density and the other areas because they don't have the green space. And my final point is, one of the things for poorer communities, the last thing you want to give an option on is less parking, because they're already parking poor in a community, because when those buildings were built, there were many times there was no parking requirement.
Our next speaker is Ms. Perry, and after that is Mr. Rosenthal, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Zine, and then some members for a second time. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I know we've had this debate many, many times, and some of us have been out to many community meetings where we're asked to sign a housing pledge, and when elected officials go to the meetings, they always sign a pledge and say that they support affordable housing. But it doesn't always turn out to be the case. You know, no one's going to say no to affordable housing, but the real issue is whether or not you're going to build it in the communities that you're representing. And so we have an interesting challenge ahead of us, because we've had this discussion many, many times, and it hasn't resulted in an outcome that is consensus-oriented. Many times, I go to areas that I don't represent, and I say, you know, to people who are older that their children could not afford to live in the homes in which they were raised, we now have a new wave of homelessness upon us, people who've lost their jobs and then lose their homes, and are doing things like living in their cars, or as someone said, surfing couches, and that will not get better for a while, that may get worse. So I think we need to be really honest with each other, and not theoretical, and not just try to push to get eight votes to "we win, you lose," because the truth of it is, if we don't create an ordinance that is balanced enough to encourage developers to come and build in areas in which they have not traditionally built, or to see the possibilities of the doing workforce housing and affordable housing and low-income housing mixed together with market-rate housing is a thing that can generate cash flow, that can generate revenue. If we can't do that, then we may fail again. And so I think it's going to be very important for all of us to be very honest with each other. You know, I produced charts in the past about the number of homeless beds in each community, the number of homeless permanent supportive housing units in each community. So, you know, I think my record's pretty good about what I've done, and some of the other folks around us have done a good job, but obviously, there are homeless people or people in great need throughout the city of Los Angeles, but we have to be able to achieve a balance so that we can not just create an ordinance that is in words and not in deed, and that will actually cause building to occur. So we need to be inclusive in our viewpoint so that we can actually create some deliverables throughout the city and not just engage in theoretical discussion. This time around, I believe this is the third time we've been through this, and we're still having the same conversation.
Thank you, Bon Bon.
Mr. Rosenthal.
It's nice to see people applauding and participating in it. You know, I'm looking at Holiday Venice, I'm looking at Lincoln Place, I'm looking at Power, I'm looking at the groups in the west side in the 11th councilmatic district that desperately, desperately, like I, believe we need to have more affordable housing, period. Ms. Goldberg, you know that the 11th district is the most gridlocked district, in part because there is not enough affordable housing. And developers come in every day and take down apartment buildings that are affordable, throw the folks out and condoize it. They've slowed down a little bit now because of the down economy, but they're planning to ramp it back up again. And they always use their complaint to me, "It's the price of the land councilman." So we have to figure this out. If I had my way, I would have 25% affordable housing in every project in the west side. That 25% affordable housing, which is a challenge, I understand it's a challenge because developers always say it doesn't pencil in, and I always say, "Go back and get a new pencil," okay? It can pencil in, especially now with the Obama administration and stimulus monies that can assist us and cooperate and coordinate with us. So I would like us to see this as a framework that allows the affordable housing to happen on the west side. You know, the people on the west side, as Mr. Garcetti with great articulation said, "You know, we can't get around anymore." And half of the problem is people coming into the district in the morning and leaving in the afternoon. There's a workforce housing, there are low-income people. Then we have places like Holiday Venice, which is affordable housing. And I want the people who live there to end up owning those units and having the same rights as the people who make a lot of money. And if we can find ways to do that, we need to do that as well. But Mr. Reyes and I were having a little sidebar here, and he is a great author of this, and Mr. Russen has shown great leadership on the housing committee. I will have a staff member closely working with Mr. Reyes on this, because my goal is to preserve the affordable housing I have on the west side and to increase the number and stock of affordable housing going forward. So I know this is just a framework today. This is the beginning of a discussion, but I want you to know, Ms. Goldberg, that we got to have affordable housing in the 11th district. It shouldn't be just for the rich, it should be for everybody, and we should give that opportunity to all. And whatever we can do, Ollanda, with the federal government in getting their support, you know, when Mercedes goes back there and becomes a strong player for this president, I'm expecting that support to continue to be here, and I'm expecting stimulus money to help assist. Last comment I want to make is, you know, we have some really great developers that I love, that build affordable housing. We have a project happening right now on Culver Boulevard, where we're going to have over 150 units for low, low, low-income seniors, and that is in the process of being built right now, okay? So we're making progress with that developer, and there are other developers who believe, like he does, that we can make it all work. So I want to thank you for your collective leadership here. I look forward to the collective leadership of my colleagues and I on this issue, and I hope, as sure as I'm standing here, that we can up the percentages of affordable housing in every project we make going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you. And everyone has been so articulate today. You know, when you come down to the end, you only have your little piece which you could talk about. I want to thank all of you who are here today and who've worked very hard, and the staff who've worked very hard. There have been a lot of discussions and changes, I think, to take into consideration, some people's concerns, and that when you come back with an ordinance, you will have heard from everyone here. I want to echo or embellish a little bit on some of the items I've talked about, traffic and transportation, with my hat on as a transportation chair. And as someone who lives in the valley and sees all these cars going by, some of our major thoroughfares, these are people who are coming from Palmdale and Lancaster, and even farther than that, is Bakersfield, to be able to work in this region. And the traffic that is created on the west side and the east side, and you look at, we use the example of the 10 freeway. When I was growing up, and the 10 freeway coming downtown in the morning was packed, going westbound, there was no traffic whatsoever. You could just race on down there. And I distinctly remember, it kind of changed when I was working at HUD and I had to actually meet Henry Cisneros, he had moved here in Los Angeles, and I thought, "Oh, I can go downtown to my office, get there at 7:30, and still make an 8:30 breakfast on the west side, because it won't take me more than 15 minutes to go on the 10 freeway." I was late to a meeting with the secretary, and because of that. And for us now, when you look at that traffic and you're going to, you know, going to Santa Monica, you find that there's a lot of jobs there, but there's no affordable housing. And you look at any part of the city where there's traffic and the traffic patterns that relates to not affordable. So it's not only with the transportation, but it also is on us trying to create more affordable housing opportunities for those. People are living longer, and the ability for them to live with dignity and to be able to own their home and to be able to afford it is critically important. And we have to look at ways in which we can create that affordable housing here in the city of Los Angeles, and think outside the box to be able to do something that will work, that will create that housing and provide it for people. And so I just want to thank all of you that are here today, your advocates, you've never given up that we would have a mixed-income housing policy here in the city of Los Angeles. And I think, as mentioned, it's a long time coming, and the ordinance will come back with some of the answers to the questions people had today, but I think most importantly, creating affordable housing is the right thing to do, reducing our traffic is the right thing to do, and so I look forward to that coming back and it being implemented in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Hold my time, Mr. President, please, I have a few questions. Westfield project was approved yesterday, a major project on the west side, including hundreds, if not thousands, of residential components. How many of those have been earmarked that would fall in this category in the project that was approved yesterday?
I'm unaware of, I don't know the details.
None. None were approved. Why were none approved if we're talking about being serious to establish income affordable housing for people?
Because you need a policy in place in order to actually integrate those into the projects.
We established a policy in my district, if they want to develop in Warner Center, they have to have 25% affordable.
Because your specific plan.
So we approved a major project yesterday that doesn't include any of these components on the west side, but we're trying to have folks live where they can work and live in the same proximity. The issue of luxury housing, if it's called luxury, are they then exempt from all the provisions if it's deemed luxury, either a condo or an apartment that has the definition luxury? Are they then excluded?
No.
The aspect of what I see here, affordable, moderate, low-income, very low-income, extremely low-income, if we develop this citywide, which I support for the folks that are here, the senior population, that we do that, that we're serious about doing that, what incentives do we have for the developers who are already screaming that they don't have a return on their dollar to build at market rate, leave alone to assist the folks that need housing? What kind of incentives are available? What kind of incentives can we create for those folks that are in the development field that are basically now closing shop and pleading poverty?
Well, the kind of incentives that exist right now are the incentives that are provided through SB 1818, so there are a range of incentives provided by the state law and by the implementing ordinance here in the city. There are also some processing incentives that exist right now, but clearly, if we are going to have an effective ordinance citywide, we are going to have to look at additional incentives beyond that. Our committee suggested that some of the incentives that we might be looking at would be things like processing, fee reductions, parking is always an issue, and I know that there are two sides to that story, but a lot of the developers have indicated that that is one of the incentives that would be very beneficial to them. But I think we have to be as creative as possible, get outside the box, work with the development community, and come up with as many incentives as we can identify.
So when we talk about reducing the parking, and the people have cars, even seniors have cars, where do we then put the cars?
I'm telling you that what we are told by the development community is that one of the best incentives for them to offset the cost of creating affordable housing is reduction in parking. To the extent that we can actually document that the creation of affordable housing reduces the number of cars that come to a project, we might be able to do that. But we are at the beginning of this discussion, so I don't think any of us have concluded that that necessarily will be one of the incentives, but it's clearly one that I think we have to look at.
And I've been here for eight years, and I know we've been speaking about this for a very long time, trying to help the folks, to give them quality, affordable housing. And I know that I had a fight in my district in Warner Center to try and get this 25% that would be affordable workforce housing that we finally have on the books, and lo and behold, developers aren't interested until something expires because it doesn't return the dollars to them. This includes projects from 20 to 50 units.
The range that we have been recommended to look at is 20 to 50 units.
So if a unit is 60 units, it wouldn't qualify?
No, I'm saying anything over 50.
So if it was 300 units, it would qualify?
Sure, yes.
But if it was under the 20, it wouldn't qualify?
Would not.
Okay. And the issue of the $400,000 to fund a study, how many times we have to study the fact that we need housing for the people?
Yeah, the $400,000 is not a study to look at any technical aspects of it. Whatever ordinance we adopt will have to have some CEQA or environmental review. The $400,000 is simply the money that could be needed for an environmental review. We will, prior to coming back in September with a number of options, we will be looking at initial studies, but the range of options will probably also have a range of environmental impacts or environmental clearance and work. And so the $400,000 is simply the environmental work that is required, that we have no option of doing or not doing.
Okay, because what it states is $400,000 in community block grant to fund any studies related to mixed-income housing ordinance.
And that is, from our perspective, anything that has to do with the environmental work. If there is technical studies that needs to be done as a result of the environmental, that would have to be done. But from our perspective, that money is for environmental stuff.
But we don't need any studies to decide that we need housing for people.
No, we need no more studies, I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's only the environmental.
And also, the planning department, city administrative officer, chief legislative analyst, none of them have completed financial impact statements. Why is that?
Because right now, we do not have an ordinance or an option that we are looking at specifically. You are giving us a framework and some guidelines, and we will come back in September with a number of options that fit into that framework. And at that point, we will, I am sure, have to look at what the financial feasibility or what the options might be.
So the bottom line is, we're trying to provide housing for the economic groups, the working class of society, quality housing throughout the city of Los Angeles, and whatever provision we can put in there to establish it with the cooperation of the private developers, the private sector, not that the city would build projects.
Yes.
Because the city-built projects haven't turned out to be quality neighborhoods, as far as I can tell from the experiences I've had. So the folks that are here, thank you. The seniors that are here, we know you need housing. The seniors that are here, we know you need housing. The working class of society, we know you need housing. I'm totally supportive of this. And what I want to see is hopefully something take place, instead of debating this and discussing this to the life of our own city of Los Angeles, where we discuss it, we review it, we explore it, but we're still caught in that same situation, where the folks that need the housing don't have the housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. LeBonge.
Very much. If I could ask everybody at the table, have you had meetings across the table with developers who are for-profit developers on this issue?
When the Technical Advisory Committee was formed, the 19 members of the Technical Advisory Committee were almost all market-rate developers who built a variety of products, and they were selected specifically because they had that experience across the board to sit with us and talk about financial feasibility, and to have a good understanding of not only what it takes to build a rental product, but what it takes to build a for-sale product. So we do believe that the Technical Advisory Committee was almost entirely made up of market-rate developers.
And is there somebody in any one of your departments that is known to that community that they want to do something, they get an expedited help, like the mayor's business team, or whatever is those groups that expedite help? I know you have meetings with developers doing things all the time. How much help do we give people now, and how much more can we give them in the future?
I think that we do provide expedite. Expedite is a service that is available to affordable housing projects, so we do provide that. We provide them with as much staff support and counseling as we can, and we certainly give them priority in terms of the processing times.
Is there any way to look at the cost of infrastructure that the city could borrow in trying to help this? I know there's no money right now, but to try to create something, because everyone says it's a cost. Los Angeles is a very wonderful place to live, and that's why so many people want to live here. That's why the cost to live here is so high and so challenging at that, okay? How do you deal with that issue of the cost? How does Long Beach do with it? How does Pasadena do with it? How does some of the other municipalities?
I'm sorry.
To help build things, to help make a difference. How did San Diego deal with it?
Well, one of the things that you just mentioned is a key component, and that's the provision of infrastructure. And to the extent that the city supports neighborhoods and communities with good infrastructure, it certainly makes it easier and less expensive for developers to build in those communities. One of the things that we are doing in the Planning Department is working very hard on all of the new community plans, to include in every community plan that we create, an entire chapter on infrastructure that will bring together information for communities that they do not have access to right now, which is a set of existing conditions that tells every community all of the infrastructure that exists currently in the community in one place for them to access. And there will be a discussion of the infrastructure needs that are created by any new capacity that is being proposed in a new community plan. We are trying very hard, for the first time, to really make a connection in this city between the provision of infrastructure and new development that occurs through the private sector. So that is a major objective that we have in the Planning Department, and we're working with the other departments to do that.
Transit is a thing, as we are developing here, whether it's the orange line, or the red line, or the blue line, whatever, gold line. What do you have planned for that aspect of it? Will there be enhancements near rail stations?
Well, one of the things that we're doing that we have not done in the past is to work closely with the communities for each of the new transit stations, to create a land-use plan for the area around the transit station that is oriented to community needs as a way for us to get ahead of development, and to really think about how do we leverage this investment that is being made in a major piece of infrastructure? How do we leverage it to bring other investments into the community that not only provide for the growth, because that is our problem, not the community's problem, but how do we use those investments to really leverage to get the things in the community that will improve the quality of life for the people who live there now? So in the Planning Department, we're currently working on 12 transit-oriented development plans. We went out and got money from SCAG to actually do those plans, and each of them will be integrated into the new community plans.
I think there's an important component of neighborhoods, of existing neighborhoods, they want to be existing neighborhoods, whatever the neighborhood is, they don't want to feel challenged by overdevelopment. How do you say you could protect those neighborhoods?
Well, what I tell them is that we have to be careful to identify in their community places where new growth can be accommodated in ways that does not overly burden the community. So for instance, we would be looking at transit stations where new people who live there have access to transit and alternatives to the car, and so those folks are less of a burden to the community, but they also bring an opportunity to the community to leverage new development and new infrastructure to benefit the community. And that's something that we have not always carefully looked at in the past around our transit-oriented stations. How do we create a land-use plan that really benefits the existing neighborhood? How do we use that investment to bring things that the neighborhoods need? And so communities have been very open to the prospect of development that really enhances and improves their community. And I think that's the key. The development can't be about growth for other people. It has to be about how does it improve the neighborhood that I live in now and make my life better?
And dealing with the neighborhood councils, how are you going to interface in the coming months to develop this?
Well, one of the things, and one of the reasons, that we have been reasonably insistent that we have some time to do this right, is that we need the opportunity to really engage the neighborhood councils. And while there has been some outreach that has occurred through the community and through the mayor's office to talk in general about a mixed-income ordinance, we believe strongly that we have to give communities an opportunity to really look at the ordinances that we are preparing, so that when we all come forward here, we will have been able to deal with as many of the community issues as possible in advance of any council hearing of the issue. So we are committed to doing that outreach and making sure that the neighborhood councils are engaged.
Thank you very much. I also want to say, members, I would love to see us, and we have our city attorney, city clerk, voting clerk, there should be an ITA desk. There's these big screens right here that could possibly provide you information that would show certain things to the city, which will help us make a decision and share with the public. So if we could work on that, Mr. President, in the future, something, because that information is important. I do represent a district that has a variety of housing in its district, and the challenges that others have, not as great as others have, but has challenges of trying to make it work. I know it's difficult in this time, in this area, but we have to think to the future to try to do the best we can for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge. Mr. Smith is next. Call for the question. All right, we have three members still on. Does anybody object to calling the question? Is there an objection to calling the question?
I can close, actually.
Okay, so there's an objection that will require a vote, and it will require 10 members to call the question.
I can still close.
Okay, under our rules, after the question's been called, Mr. Reyes can still close as the original one, so. So if there's no objection to calling the question, the question is called, Mr. Reyes, would you like to conclude? Oh, did you object, Ms. Hahn? Okay. So we require a vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, four noes.
All right. That is, Mr. Alacon then is next, and then Ms. Hahn. If you don't want to speak, okay, Ms. Hahn then.
Okay, thank you. I'll be quick. As you know, I'm very supportive of this. Just a couple of things I want you to look at as you move forward. One was, in lieu of fees and the proximity where you can build affordable housing, not sure if you've determined exactly where that's been. We'd like for you to maybe look at the community plan area, the entire area, as maybe instead of miles in proximity. Just something to look at, didn't know what you think about that, or if that would work. And on the $400,000 from CDBG money, just want to make sure that's there, it's usable. Would it make more sense to use stimulus money for this, which I also think is available for projects like this?
Actually, I do believe it's stimulus money.
Oh, it is stimulus money?
It is stimulus money. The CDBG are.
The CDBG money is stimulus money?
Yes.
Are you sure about that?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. And then, just want to get clarification on the SB 1818, and how that overlays with this, impacts this. I don't know if you can answer that now, or you can give me more classification later.
I'd be happy to just tell you that that is a major issue that we are carefully looking at with our city attorney and with our consultants, but it is our preliminary view that any ordinance that we enact here that requires additional units or requires affordability, the folks who do that, or who actually build it, would be able to access the incentives that are available through the state law.
And one of those being 35% density.
Including the density bonus.
Right. So if we mandate, you know, 10%, 15%, 25%, that automatically means they'll be building it, and they would be able to access, if they ask for it, the 35% density?
Yes.
So every project?
Yes. And so one of the things that we want to look carefully at is what would be the impact? To what extent would developers use that for a range of options? And those are the range of options that we are going to be looking at over the next three months, and we'll bring them back to you, so that before we move forward to even do an environmental impact report, you will have a better sense of what is the impact of each of those alternatives.
Right. But why wouldn't they? I mean, if we mandated them to do at least 10%, that gives them 35% density bonus, why wouldn't they do that?
Well, it depends on what other alternative compliance measures they have. And frankly, many of the developments, even though it is available to them, it doesn't make sense to use them. If you are building a certain building type, and the density bonus puts you into a higher building type, you go from wood frame to concrete or steel, it's not worth it to you. So there certainly are developments that would choose not to use it. And we want to look at those.
But you're going to look at that and get back to us?
Absolutely.
And when do you think we will have a little more meat to this?
We will come back. The timeline that you will be adopting today, hopefully, brings us back in middle September, not with a final ordinance, but with a few alternatives, with some initial environmental work.
I can think at that point, you would have the percentage?
Yes, with different percentages, and with some indication of what the impact might be, or to what extent each of them might trigger the use of SB 1818, so that you will have more information before we move further. And this is a tack that we think will work well for us, to come here, you know, on a regular basis and check in, and let you all agree that we're going in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues, for letting me ask those additional questions.
Good question.
Thank you.
All right. For his concluding words now, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, thank you for the time to speak on this matter. In closing, I am very inspired by the level of questions we've heard today.
I am sorry, I know you have momentum. Mr. Zine did press his button, and so I want to make sure you're the closer, so.
Just one question.
That's just a preview of coming attraction.
Thank you, just one question.
Mr. Zine for some brief comments.
One question, I'm sure Ms. Hahn joins me in this question. Neighborhood councils, are they going to be included in any of the reviews or discussions? Neighborhood councils?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, back to your eloquent closing.
So much for being inspired. But I do want to ask all of you, that seven years ago, we couldn't get a second for inclusionary zoning because of an environment that was created. An environment that was created by many mistruths, many fears, and the fact that it became an us-versus-them mentality. And that's the worst thing we could do for the city, especially now. The middle class is hurting, all the way down through all the different income levels. We're hearing from our seniors, we're hearing from our families, they have no place to live. So this process, if you look at this timeline, I ask you, I beseech you, take your deputies, have them come to the different sessions, have them come to committees, raise your questions. So when we come back to this horseshoe, we come back to this arena, we need to really look hard at ourselves and say, are we making decisions that are good for the city, or are we making decisions based on what the media or the print had said the day or the night before? This city can't afford that type of posture. So I ask you, we've waited seven years, we want to make sure that we understand what this means, we're going to have county supervisors very upset at us, we're going to have former planning commissioners railing away at what this council doesn't know. But let's prove to them we do know, because we were deliberate with our process, we raised the questions, and we asked every stakeholder, every for-profit, every nonprofit, every service provider, what the role is in this ordinance, because this could change how the city evolves for the next five or 10 years. And these are critical years. President Obama has a lot at stake. This country has to turn around in the next two years, but it starts locally. It starts with our ability to implement real policy for all the real people that live in the city. So for that, I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And with that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you, that is approved. Thank you all very much. Thank you all for coming in, we appreciate your presence and your activism. If we can take up number 11 next. That was called special by Mr... No, I'm sorry, before that, we had number two, Mr. Parks. If we can take up item two, Mr. Alacon. Number two. Mr. Alacon hails from the 7th Council District, which is in the San Fernando Valley, includes the communities of Ocoyama.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Mr. President, this item is with regard to a finding of public convenience and necessity, or the reverse. I would like to ask the city attorney, Adrian Corasani, and representing LAPD, Dwayne Hayakawa. If we could ask the city attorney to lay out the parameters of the item before us, and then LAPD will express their issues with regard to this particular site.
Thank you, Councilmember Adrian Corasani, Deputy City Attorney. What's before you is a... I am considering whether to deny or approve an application for a finding of public convenience and necessity to issue a new liquor license to sell beer and wine for off-site consumption to Snack Size, which is located in Panorama City. The legal standard applied here is that the decision-makers, the council members, need to make findings in order to support a denial of the application, and substantial evidence is required to support those findings. You'll be hearing from the officers to my left regarding the crime statistics and the situation in the surrounding area of this location, as well as from the council member.
Well, I would only, I'm only holding it because I don't want to get in the middle of it.
Please. Mr. Alacon?
I'm sorry, if LAPD could give us the practical information with regard to this site?
Absolutely, Councilman. Good afternoon, Council. Basically, we're just here in a strong opposition to the sale of this off-site sales of alcohol bar and wine at 951 Van Nuys Boulevard. Basically, this location is kind of unique. It falls within two identified zones pertaining to the city's efforts at raising the quality of life in the community. As you probably already know, there's several designated safer... As you probably already know, there's several designated safer cities initiative, areas within the city of Los Angeles that have been historically plagued by gangs, illegal narcotics, and overall decline of quality of life. This particular location does fall within the Safer Cities Initiative of North Hills in this community. The crime rate in that particular area is above one hundred and twenty percent of the average R D for the city. Also uniquely enough, this location also falls within the boundaries of the newly-created Panorama City Mission Gang Reduction and Youth Development Grid Zone, which was established as one of twelve sites within the city based on the high crime rates of relative gang activity compared to the rest of the city. I think as of two thousand and seven, it's above four hundred percent of gang crime. We've been working with numerous other city departments as, in partnership, to reduce the gang activity, narcotics sales, and other types of crimes, while also enhancing the quality of life in the community. Most of this has been due to the Safer Cities Initiative, but it's been a much combined effort with much of the other city departments and resources, and to establish an additional alcohol sales within the area that is off-site would definitely be detrimental to our efforts. As noted, there's Tobias Park, which is directly north of the location of where this proposed site is. We've had recent city council action restricting the hours of operation from this local park, which used to be from sunrise to about, I think, ten P M. Now it's just sunrise to sunset, because people would loiter there, drink, gang members would hang out there, so we had to ask for a change in ordinance so we could enforce loitering and drinking restrictions over there at that park. It's been our experience with the L A P D that typically increased alcohol sales in the community leads to enhanced criminal and gang activity.
Thank you, members. The bottom line is that I find it difficult to find any public convenience that is being provided with another liquor establishment, particularly off-site liquor sales, and certainly there is no necessity for those sales in this particular community. To the contrary, it would have a negative impact to the community, particularly with regard to crime, and all the actions we have taken have provided sufficient evidence that we are trying to get a hold of that crime problem, particularly with the grid program and the Safer Cities Initiative. So with that, I have to make a technical motion to meet the legal standards, so if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read my motion. I hereby move that the council, in the matter of council file number zero nine dash zero four five nine, deny the application for a finding of public convenience or necessity to issue a new liquor license to sell beer and wine for off-site consumption to Snack Size located at ninety fifty-one Van Nuys Boulevard, Panorama City, California, nine one four oh two, based on the, based upon the findings below. Find that the public convenience and necessity will not be served by issuing a license to sell beer and wine for off-site consumption to Snack Size located at the previously stated address, inasmuch as the proposed site is located in a high-crime reporting district, and find that the public convenience and necessity will not be served by issuing a liquor license at this location, inasmuch as the proposed site is located in a gang reduction and youth development zone, which is a zone identified by the mayor's office and city council, most affected by gangs and gang activity, and designated to receive increased deployment of police and additional resources focused on prevention and intervention. The evidence in the record of the administrative proceedings which supports the findings include, but is not limited to, the following. The location of the proposed site is in a high-crime reporting district. There were four hundred and fifty-four recorded offenses in the district exceeding the citywide average of three hundred and sixty-nine offenses per district. Moreover, the area in which the proposed site is located is designated as a grid zone due to the proliferation of gang activity in the area. L A P D has stated that alcohol sales and consumption increase the rate of crime, and therefore the sale of alcohol beverages in the area would tend to create a law enforcement problem. Two, there is one, there is one sensitive use within a thousand feet of the proposed site. This sensitive use is a park with a playground, and due to issues involving gang activity, including intimidation and loitering, a motion was adopted by the council on December sixteen, two thousand and nine, to restrict the park's hours of operation. Instruct the city clerk to transmit this determination to the State Department of Alcohol Beverage Control as required, as the required finding under Business and Professions Code Section two three nine five eight dash, excuse me, period, four, point four, excuse me. With that, I would ask for a second, in order to deny this finding of public convenience or necessity. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. We have one speaker card, Mr. Matt Dodd in San Pedro.
Yeah, thank you, yes, triumphant victoriousness, because we talked about these a lot, and I'm very happy that, I want to explain to Channel Thirty-Five, everybody watching, what just happened, because it was a very complicated way Mr. Alarcon went about it, but basically we're denying the sale of alcohol, finally, somewhere in the city of Los Angeles, and it is a root problem. L A P D recognizes it, and we're all in support of that, and closing these, some of these things, denying applications, that's what it takes now, got to stand up to some of these people. And Van Nuys is a beautiful place, just like down here in San Pedro. Anybody wants to get away from it all, come to San Pedro, Janus's beautiful harbor district.
That will close public comment, if we can prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Item eleven is next, and Mr. Parks called that special. Mr. Parks?
Mr. Zine.
Mr. Zine wants to start, you point to Mr. Zine.
Thank you.
Is he going to inspire us?
I'm going to inspire you, Mr. President, it's, thank you, Mr. Parks, this comes out of the Personnel, Budget, and Finance, and it deals with pensions, the police and fire pension, the water and power pension, Lacer pension, the pensions for the Los Angeles City employees, and we have representatives here, if they can please take the table. There's been, shall we say, some serious allegations, some news stories, some investigations by various authorities on pensions and people involved in pension funds in different parts of the country, and in Personnel Committee yesterday, we heard from the representatives that are here today, and I want to apologize for the time of twelve thirty in the afternoon, I know you folks got here at around ten o'clock this morning, along with the rest of us, but what we're here to discuss and review is the stability of the pension funds from the water and power, Lacers, police and fire, and these pensions are for all city employees in various departments, these are the three pension plans that cover city employees active and retired. So we have the representatives from the various plans with us, and their representatives are with them, we have the Ethics Commission here, we have the city attorney's office here, commissioners, et cetera, regarding the pension plans, and Mr. Parks and I, along with Mr. Cardenas, heard the issues yesterday, it was a lengthy discussion, as far as the concerns, the drop in funds due to the drop in the market, and all the parameters of the pension fund. So with that beginning, I will ask Mr. Parks if he has any introductory statements, if not, then we'll let the commissioners with Mr. Mike Perez begin.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, I would just like to open in the fact that this thing started in the sense of reading the papers about primarily what was going on in the police, fire. We also caught up with Sally and the number of things she started doing as she heard about it. Water and power, we were not on our radar at the time, but as we went through the discussion, I think what was important is not only determine the viability of all three plans, but also a key factor came out in the discussion as to separating the issue of whether the downturn of the economy is the only reason why there's a loss of funds, or have we also created a different strategy in how those investments were made? And I think those are the kind of things we wanted to get to, because we're talking about, I believe, if I figured, well over twenty billion dollars worth of funds between these three funds here, and even though in the last year it's been about a twenty percent dropage, close to twenty percent average between the three of them, we're still talking over twenty billion dollars. And so we thought it was important to bring it to council to get their insights, and particularly a term that's been around for thirty years, but we just heard about it in the newspaper called placement agents, and I think it's important that we go through that, and Sally also, I think you had the city attorney's opinion as to just what their view of that position of those employees are.
And let me just add, if you can give the definition, I know we went to a lot of definitions and explanation yesterday, briefly described the different components and the different agents that are used by the different pension funds for investments, because it was foreign to us on the Personnel Committee, I'm sure it'll be foreign to many of our viewers, as well as my colleagues here. So Mike, if you want to begin, and then we can have the Lacers and then the Water and Power.
Thank you. Mike Perez, General Manager of Fire and Police Pensions, and I'm joined by Tom Lopez, who's our Chief Investment Officer. I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. We invest billions of dollars, and in the investments of those monies, we generate fees in the millions to investment managers. There's a tremendous temptation that goes along with the management of the assets. There's been a lot of media attention and focus on this area because of kickback scandals that have occurred in New Mexico and in New York, and this provides us an opportunity to take a really hard look at policies and procedures we have to make sure that we monitor our investments properly. We were recently audited by the city, along with Lacers and Water and Power, and we were commended that our governance policies were in excellent shape. However, we can always improve, and we take this opportunity as a tremendous one to improve our operations. Many systems, pension systems in the country are making changes to correct the kinds of things that have occurred out in New Mexico and in New York. While we recognize that immediate steps need to be taken, for example, our board terminated a relationship with a private equity consultant, Aldis Equity, that was named in the problems that occurred out in New York. We're very cognizant that this is a complex area, and we need to operate very carefully, so that we don't have unintended consequences. I'd like to state up front, for the record, that the staff of Fire and Police Pensions has taken a careful look at the motion, and that we think the issues addressed in the motion warrant careful consideration by the staff and also by our board. On a short-term basis, we're reviewing the disclosure policies that we have in-house in private equity and in real estate, and we'll be going to our board and making a report on that in June, June eighteenth. On a slightly longer term, we're taking a look at disclosure policies that have been done by CalPERS, by the New York Attorney General, a code of conduct, and also monitoring what's going on in New Mexico. The situation there is very fluid, because they're...
Mr. President, could you ask, it's hard for us to hear, listen...
I could ask the staff that is over here to please take their conversations to the back of chambers, thank you.
So we're taking a hard look at what CalPERS has done, which is on the, is attached to the letter that I sent to Personnel Committee. We're also taking a look at the code of conduct adopted by the New York Attorney General Office, that code of conduct's been embraced by the New York State Teachers Retirement System, it's being considered by New York City. Each of these has a lot of detail about placement agents and disclosure that needs to be done by the placement agents to the systems that placement agents work for. At this point, I'd like to deviate a little bit and introduce Tom Lopez, who'll talk a little bit about placement agents, private equity, and essentially what's going on back east.
A number of investment managers don't maintain their own sales staff, and so what they'll do is hire someone on the outside of the company to sell their particular investment product for them. These external sales forces go by a couple of different names. Placement agents is one of them, third-party marketers is another, and also sometimes they're referred to as finders. Some of them are licensed by the S E C and some are not. In the state of New York's pension fund, there was a scandal that arose back in March of this year. What was going on is that there were two individuals associated with the fund who were charged by the Securities and Exchange Commission and the New York Attorney General with accepting bribes. A lot of, and one of the individuals was essentially masquerading as what's known as a placement agent, although he wasn't licensed and he didn't actually have a firm. The investment management firms that wanted business for the state of New York would actually pay him very, very large overturned placement agent fees in order to get money from the state pension fund in New York. What happened as this investigation went on is that it became apparent that this sort of activity was going on in other pension funds across the country. So there are now investigations going on in New York City, in the state of Texas, there's a major one in New Mexico, and currently there's one here in Los Angeles that involves the Fire and Police Pension System. So that's what's going on in a nutshell.
Thanks, Tom. And just to wrap it up, we're taking a look at all these policies, the issues that are going on around the country, and putting together a policy, a draft policy, that we should have in place by next week. We're working with the Ethics Commission and with the city's attorney's office to make sure that they carefully review the policy, we're going back to our board July ninth. So happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Gruel is next?
Do you want to hear from Sally Choy first?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm Sally Choy, General Manager of Lacers, the Los Angeles City Employees Retirement System for all civilian employees, and I'm here with our Chief Investment Officer, Dan Gallagher. Our board president, Eric Holoman, was here, but he apologizes he had to leave, because he knows that this is a paramount issue and he really wanted to be here to address this item. But we at Lacers are greatly concerned about the pay-to-play investment allegations that have plagued other public pension systems, and we are here today to share with you the steps we have taken to help ensure that our board members and staff do not get involved either purposefully or inadvertently in such schemes. First, I'd like to make it clear that our board has not been tainted by the pay-to-play allegations that have plagued other public pension systems. Lacers members, the members of the city council, and the members of the public can be assured that our investment decisions are made solely on the merits of the investment opportunities. We have had controls in place for some time to help us avoid conflicts of interest, and those controls include a longstanding marketing cessation policy, which in essence serves as a recurring reminder to the board members of a blackout period for talking with any potential vendors, including investment managers and placement agents who might seek to do business with the board in the near future. Another control that we have in place to help ensure that our board members do not purposefully get involved in pay-to-play schemes is ensuring that our investment opportunities are vetted by an investment committee, and that no recommendations come forward from that committee unless, two, the three members are present at the committee meeting. This helps ensure or prevent a situation like what apparently happened in New York Retirement Common Fund, where all investment decisions were made by one individual. Recently, we also initiated a strategic plan objective to enhance the due diligence conducted by our staff in advance of selecting any investment manager. This will dovetail with the due diligence that has largely been conducted by our outside consultants, by our investment consultants, and will serve as another set of eyes to ensure that our investment decisions are made solely on the merits of the investment opportunities. We also have recently, in light of the New York situation, have taken steps to ensure that our board members do not inadvertently get involved with placement agents or others who may be receiving compensation for making, for marketing investment opportunities. The issue here is that a board member may not know that an individual they have spoken with is a marketer, as the investment managers have not been required to disclose the use of marketers. Our board recently took action to require the disclosure of all third-party marketers referring deals to Lacers, that stand to receive fees or other compensation or consideration in the event that Lacers contracts with that investment manager. This policy will help ensure transparency in our investment decision-making processes, and our board has chose disclosure, a disclosure policy over an outright ban. Across the nation, different boards have taken different steps, ranging from disclosure all the way to the ban of use of placement agents. However, our board believes that the placement agents acting in a manner consistent with laws and regulations serve a legitimate purpose. They provide information about products they represent that allows our board to consider a broad range of investment opportunities. They also create a more level playing field for small and emerging firms that do not have the resources to have their own internal marketing staff. Our board and staff have also been working proactively with the staffs of the city Ethics Commission, the Public Integrity Unit of the city attorney's office, to help identify further... further opportunities for transparency and disclosure in investment decision-making processes. For example, we made a recent request for the city attorney to determine whether placement agents should be required to follow the lobbying ordinance of the City of L.A. To close, as you can tell from my comments, our board and the staff at Lasers take our fiduciary responsibility very seriously, and we understand the duty to our members and will continue to take proactive steps to adopt best practices and policies in all areas impacting investments, ethics, and conflict of interest, and specifically the issue of placement agents. We look forward to continuing working with our Ethics Commission staff, the City Attorney's Office, and the city council to help ensure the continuing trust of our members and the public in the City of L.A. Thank you.
Ms. Breck, do you want to fish anything up before Ms. Gruel? Okay, next. Water and Power, next. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Sangeeta Bhatyan. I'm the Retirement Plan Manager for the Water and Power Employees Retirement Plan. With respect to this issue concerning placement agents, our board met and discussed adopting a formal policy at the meeting of May 20th, and it was decided that the Governance Committee of the Board would discuss all the issues that should be incorporated in adopting a formal policy. The Governance Committee meeting is scheduled for June 3, 2009, and that's next week. Board members are very sensitive to making sure that any potential conflicts of interest, any real or potential conflicts of interest are avoided and that there be complete transparency and full disclosure in our policy. You should be aware that even currently, we do have several controls in place. For example, our contracts require that any contact with an investment manager by a board member, staff, council member, or any other government official be reported promptly to the Board President and myself. And this particular compliance measure is required annually as well as at the time that the contact takes place. In addition to this, the board members are looking at strengthening the existing controls, and some of the areas that will be looked at with the objective of providing transparency and maximum disclosure will be areas such as making sure that when an investment opportunity is brought up, that information as to whether a placement agent was used with respect to a contract be specifically noted, the identity of the placement agent be provided, the compensation paid to the placement agent, the names of board members, commissioners, our city council members, plan staff, consultants, who suggested the use of the placement agent, and also information as to whether the placement agent is a registered lobbyist. The city attorney opinion that Ms. Choi just referred to, we were provided with a copy of that, and this is with respect to determining whether a placement agent is a registered lobbyist. That information will also be taken into account in developing a policy.
Ms. Breck?
Just give an overview by each pension fund, the governance of your board, and just give an idea in the sense of the dollar value of your fund, and also what your monthly outlay is as relates to providing service to your members.
Our board's governed by nine board members. Five are appointed by the mayor, two are elected by the fire, one active, one retired, and two by police, one active and retired. Our monthly pension roll is $75 million. We have capital calls, monies that we spend for commitments we've made of real estate and private equity that averages around $40 million a month, so it's around $110, $115 million dollars a month that we spend on cash. The current market value of our fund is around $11.5 billion.
Sally? Sally?
Oh, I'm sorry. The Lasers Board is, consists of seven board members, four appointed by the mayor, one of which has to be a retired Lasers member, and then three elected by the membership, two by active employees, and one by retirees. The market value of our assets as of today, which is up from yesterday by the way, is $8.12 billion. Was there anything else?
Current monthly roll?
And the current monthly outlay and cash flow is $50 billion, excuse me, $50 million in benefit payments each month, and anywhere from $5 to $50 million a month in capital calls. It averages out about $12 million in capital calls.
Okay.
Okay. Our retirement board consists of seven board members. Three of them are elected active employee members, elected by the employees of the Department of Water and Power. One is a retiree representative, two ex-official members, the general manager of the Department of Water and Power, and the chief financial officer, and one commissioner who's also on the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. As far as the value, market value of our plan, it's five point, as of yesterday, was $5.6 billion, and the disbursements are approximately $30 million a month for the retirement roll, and another couple of million for disability and debt benefits.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, at the committee yesterday, we talked briefly about over the last couple of years having a transition of changing from your prior portfolio and profile into a different profile. Could you give us an explanation in what that means, and when we talked about the level of volatility of investments from one extreme to the other, how those moves were made, and what impact that may have had on the fund?
Yeah, I'd like to turn that over to Tom Lopez, our Chief Investment Officer.
And Tom, if you can go through that step that you gave us of what's the least volatile up to the...
The most, correct. Pension plans like ourselves invest in a wide variety of different assets, and the assets range in terms of the risk you're undertaking when you invest in them and also the expected return from them. So starting at the bottom of the list, the most secure and also the lowest yielding investments are obligations of the United States Treasury. Coming next in terms of return and risk are what are known as money market funds or short-term investments, also called cash. After that, you have investments in the fixed income market, which are commonly thought of as bonds. And so with each succeeding step, you're adding return to your portfolio, but you're also adding greater risk. After bonds comes real estate in the mix, and then after real estate comes stocks. And then there are still categories that are beyond stocks. So those are the more exotic investment types, and in those you have hedge funds, and then you have a class of investments that's under the umbrella called private equity. And within private equity, there are subcategories, and the riskiest of that is venture capital. And those are investments where you're literally investing in perhaps only an idea or someone in a garage who has a prototype project, or they might be a little farther down the road where they actually have a product and some customers that they're selling. But these are companies that are in their infancy, and that's where you'll expect to make a huge return on your money, but it's also very risky. One of the main jobs of a pension fund board is to set what's called the asset allocation, which is a fancy name for the mix of investments they invest in. And it's actually the mix that the board selects that's really the most important determinant of investment performance. In our case, we have a policy where the board revisits the mix at least every three to five years. And during our last asset allocation or mix review, our board opted to add more dollars to the area of private equity, to up the allocation to hedge funds, and slightly reduce the allocation to real estate.
And then Sally, you mentioned at the committee that your asset allocation was somewhat different, and you have a cap in the sense of where you go as far as the more volatile funds.
Right. We have a different asset allocation mix, slightly different than what Fire and Police Pensions does. What it comes down to when the board makes this decision is really how much risk are you willing to tolerate, and what kind of mix, you know, diversifying your investments to ensure that you can make your obligations every month and make the risk-adjusted returns. So for Lasers, our asset allocation, we don't have a specific allocation for hedge funds, for instance. However, we do have an allocation to private equity and real estate that we call alternative investments, and about 22% in fixed income and bonds, about 42% in equities, both U.S. and non-U.S. I'm sorry, 22, 20% in non-U.S. and about 42% in U.S. equities. And then the rest, the remainder of that, in cash, private equity, and real estate. Now, I just want to point out on the private equity funds, how they work is they're, you don't, we don't particularly, we don't specifically invest in a particular private company. We invest in a fund, which is, which is run or operated by general partners, and then they pool investments for a number of different institutional investors such as the pension funds. And they're in a limited partnership agreement. So that general partner will make investments in a number of different portfolio companies. So within the fund, you try and reduce risk, or you know, you try and diversify the different kinds of investments you have. And the end game in that kind of private equity is that, you know, the exit strategy is the private company will grow and be bought out by somebody else, or go IPO or something else. So there's a longer investment period, anywhere from five years to 10 years because you're going in and turning them around in some cases. So just wanted to provide a little more insight on private equity funds.
And then for Water and Power, is that a similar process?
Yes, we do have a different allocation also. Our allocation to domestic equity is about 40%. Actually, the allocation to total equity is 55%. 40% of it is to domestic equity, 15% to international. Fixed income has 35%. Because of all the changes in the market, we actually did relatively well because of the increase in the allocation to fixed income. It ended up being about 47%. And the alternative investments consisting of private equity and hedge funds together is 5%. So that's our mix. And we conducted an asset liability study five years ago, based on which this allocation was adopted. As Sally mentioned, it is based on risk that the board, the tolerance for risk that the board is willing to undertake, and the expected returns. And about a year ago, we conducted another asset liability study. It was recommended that a few changes be made to the asset allocation mix. However, because of the downturn in the market, the board discussed the results of the asset liability study and the allocation, the new allocation, and thought it would be prudent not to proceed with making any changes, and they did not. And so that will be reviewed again before, before we implement any changes.
Okay. I appreciate the information. Let me ask, if we could just ask Mr. Manning in this hold to come up, and Ms. Manning, if you can just comment briefly on the letter that was produced by the city attorney's office as relates to the placement agent. And this hold, if you could comment on, based on that and other kinds of information, what ethics is considering as relates to addressing the issue of lobbyists and how placement agents might fit into that?
Alan Manning, Assistant City Attorney in the Retirement Benefits Division. Several meetings ago at the Lasers Board, one of the board members asked the city attorney to provide written advice as to whether or not placement agents were subject to the city's lobbying law. That was referred over to the Public Integrity Unit, which produced the letter, and I think I would like to let the Ethics Commission actually comment on that because that's really outside of my area.
Okay. Let me just ask, what was the sum and substance of the city attorney's letter on that issue? Did they make a recommendation? Did they call to a conclusion?
The response to the letter, the response to the question is that it depends on the activities of the placement agents themselves, how many hours they spend on their activities, the type of compensation they receive, and that there really is no way for, at present, the way the law is written, there isn't a way for the pension systems to know themselves whether or not those placement agents are subject to registration as lobbyists.
Because of self-reporting?
Correct.
Okay. This hold, you can comment on what your ethics has done.
Ms. Gruel, Heather Holt, Director of Policy and Legislation for the City Ethics Commission. Mr. Manning is correct. Placement agents and third-party marketers are subject to the current lobbying ordinance if they engage in 30 hours of lobbying activity in a consecutive three-month period, and that's compensated activity on that to influence municipal decisions on behalf of another person. Over the past two years, the Ethics Commission has been undertaking a very comprehensive review of the lobbying ordinance and will be, hopefully shortly, making recommendations to the council about ways to improve that ordinance. One of the recommendations that the commissioners have reached consensus on to date is that the 30-hour threshold should be eliminated and replaced with a contact-based threshold, under which a, what we consider a traditional lobbyist, someone who lobbies on behalf of a third-party client, if that person engages in one direct communication with a city official, that would trigger reporting for that person. Someone who works as an in-house lobbyist, in other words, someone who lobbies only on behalf of his or her employer, would have a different threshold of five direct communications with the city official in a calendar quarter before having to register.
And what you're saying to us is that's coming before your commission in the near future?
Yes, they have been tackling the ordinance as a whole for the last two years. They're actually at their June 9th meeting, going to be possibly taking a vote on specific language to recommend. It is our hope that we'll have a recommendation to the council by the end of the summer.
Is that also going to include the person contacting, make a notification, or strictly self-reporting by the lobbyists?
It is largely, any lobbying, set of lobbying regulations is largely self-reporting because by its definition, lobbying is something that takes place outside of public knowledge. So it is to a large degree that any system relies on self-reporting. However, we do have our enforcement division, we have our whistleblower hotline, and we certainly would investigate and look into any situations in which it was, there was concern that someone was lobbying and was not registered.
Thank you. And then the last person we'd ask, George Aliano, currently a commissioner on police, fire, if you can come up, because he testified also at the Personnel Committee. George, also retired LAPD captain.
My name is George Aliano, and I'm the elected police retired member of the Fire and Police Pension Commission. I want to state that I'm here as an individual and not on behalf of the board because when I was notified of this meeting, the board meeting had already passed. However, I have contacted all the board members telephonically, told them I would be here, and they are well aware of, well aware of my position on this issue. Back during the Governor Wilson days, he took money from the CalPERS Pension Fund, and that created a stir and resulted in the passage of Prop. 162 back in 1992, known as the Pension Protection Act. And what that did was very specifically state that politicians should stay out of pension funds. There's many statements here about to protect pension systems, retirement board trustees must be free from political meddling and intimidation. Politicians have undermined the dignity and security of all citizens who depend on pension benefits for their retirements by repeatedly raiding their pension funds. And there are several other statements I won't go through, but that's the gist of it. But the one issue that I think is important is what states the integrity of our public pension system demands that safeguards be instituted to prevent political packing of retirement boards and encroachment upon the sole exclusive... retirement boards and encroachment upon the sole exclusive fiduciary powers or infringement upon the actuarial duties of those retirement boards. Now, the term "packing" has a very specific definition that goes back to the days of Franklin Roosevelt, when he tried to pack the Supreme Court in 1937. He tried to add six justices, and he failed in doing that, but he wanted to ensure that he had enough justices to pass whatever plans he wanted to. So I want to talk about the alignment of the Board and the concentration of power under one elected official to appoint the majority of the members. There were four elected members and five appointed by the mayor. And it wouldn't matter if it was the mayor or anyone else, I don't think one person should have that authority. There are only three pension systems in the state that I know of that is formed that way: ours, Lasers, and San Diego. To me, having one person with the authority to appoint the majority is a back door to getting around at the packing issue, and skirts the intent of Prop. 162 with the control in the hands of one person. And comments were made by the President of our Board that, quote, "I can get the five votes whenever I want them," unquote. Or when the now-terminated Aldis Investment Company came to us with a proposal, and they were also being investigated by the Attorney General of New York, when they lost that vote, four to four, the President stated, "It looks like you'll have to come back," unquote, insinuating the fifth vote would be delivered when the absent appointee returned. I admit, not all appointees are untrustworthy or controlled, but I have talked to several who don't like it, and some who have left because of it. But the perception and appearance of control is there, and for four some-powerful individuals, the appeal and temptation can't be resisted. If the city wants to retain the majority vote, at least diversify the authority of having appointments made by various officials, one by the mayor, one by the President of the Council, one by the President pro tem, one by the Controller, one by the Chairman of Budget and Finance or Personnel Committee. And I think you would close the door on any potential future problems. I repeat, we've had excellent appointees, but we can still achieve that with an arrangement that reduces the power of one person. And of course, the basis of a corrupt free system is honesty. So a good vetting system needs to be in place, and hopefully, we'll have the people who won't betray the trust that was given to them. And thank you for the chance to be able to give my opinions and insights, and I hope it aids you in deciding this issue. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Colleagues, this is a snapshot of what we spent, I think, three hours yesterday, but I'm sure everybody that testified is available for questions, if you have them.
Ms. Gru.
Yep.
I just have a couple of follow-ups.
Just a couple of follow-ups. On the matter, the, to eliminate any type of possible activities which could jeopardize the system, Councilman Parks and I are submitting a couple motions to that effect. The issues that have come about in New Mexico and New York have created great concern across the country with the systems. When we look at the dollar investments, billions of dollars in the three systems, and while the market is down, each of the three plans has about the same loss as far as the dollars returned, correct? Lasers, Water &amp; Power, and Police and Fire. So it's all about the same. So what we want to do is make sure we have a balance within those pension funds. And a question that came up, the obligation and liability on the pension funds. If the pension funds are not sufficient to provide for the retirees, where does that money come from? Mr. Aliano?
Well, of course, the city will be obligated to contribute more.
So it would come from the taxpayers?
The taxpayers. On the two or five people, of course, they had to increase their contribution from 8% to 9%, so some money came from there. Now, you have to realize, we've been around since 1898, and we've gone through all of the depressions and recessions. And at one time in the early 80s, we were only 25% funded until the law was passed to liberalize our investments and getting into areas that we weren't into before. And at one time, we were up to 114% funded. Last June, we were at 99%. I'm sure after the next actuary, we'll probably be down in the 80s.
And as far as the Water &amp; Power Pension Fund, if that fund has a loss to meet the obligations, that comes from the ratepayers?
Comes from the plan sponsor.
Pardon me?
It comes from the plan sponsor, which would be the Department of Water and Power, unless there were changes made to the benefit structure, which would be a different...
But the bottom line is, it comes from the ratepayers. So the concern that we have in the Personnel Committee Budget Finance is that we monitor it, we make sure that it's run in a professional fashion, because the obligation ultimately is with the taxpayers and the ratepayers. So that's the concern that we have, to make sure that we're above board with what we're doing. But we are submitting, Mr. Parks has authored and I've seconded motions, to make some modifications to strengthen the protections of those funds, to make sure that, as Mr. Aliano has testified, the balance of those people who are selected to serve as Commissioners, they're done with a total professional view and not to have any type of conflict of interest, which has occurred in some cases in some jurisdictions. Thank you. That's all I have, Ms. Gru. And then this is for information only, the information that we're receiving, Ms. Gru.
Ms. Gru.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zahn.
I just want to confirm somewhat what I heard from all of you. One is that each of you now have or are going to adopt recommending that there be disclosure on the third-party marketers, finders, placement agents. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So all of that, they will disclose? If they're using a placement agent? It sounds like there's a little bit of different parts of each of those. And my other is the ex parte communications. I know, I think you indicated, one of you, sorry, indicated that you tell, maybe it was DDP, you tell the President of that Board. I have been pushing, and hopefully, we will have come forward for ex parte communications being proposed, if any outside contact is made. And it be publicly made at the time in which you're making any decisions on something that impacts that ex parte communication that you have received. So could you explain to me, each of you, if any of yours, any of your Commissioners are required to report that they have had ex parte communications about an item that is before them, either by placement agents and/or any others that could potentially benefit from it?
I...
Hold my time.
I believe I mentioned the communication...
Hold my time, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Just want to make sure I have maximum time.
Okay. I believe I mentioned that our investment manager contracts have a clause which requires the investment manager to report contacts by any official or staff member. And as far as the Board members are concerned, they are required to file the Form 700. We don't have a formal policy which requires a Board member to report a contact with an investment manager, but we do have it in the contract with the investment manager requiring disclosure of that communication. And that's the clause that we wish to, we will be strengthening. And I think I spoke to that.
But the investment managers not making the final decision, and it's the Board that's making the final decision.
Well, this is to do with, the Board, our Board is not involved at all in bringing investment opportunities. We have a whole process we follow. It's the Request for Proposal, RFP process, and it's an arm's-length type of process. What I was referring to is the ongoing relationship with the investment manager, where should there have been any contact? It's more to do with the solicitation of contributions with respect to any matter whatsoever that needs to be brought either to, both to me and the Board President, in terms of the fact that there was a communication made, the type of communication and the nature.
And does that happen often?
Not that often. Actually, we require an annual, it's an annual compliance kind of a matter, and we expect each investment manager to report if there was any communication that last year. So we haven't actually had any issues. I mean, we have had, once or twice, we've had maybe the custodian bank indicating that they were asked about something, but it wasn't of any significance.
Okay. Go to the other two to answer the question.
So at Lasers, we have existing longstanding policy and new policy. So the existing policy is the marketing cessation policy, which is the blackout policy. So whenever there's a RFP or any type of contract renewal taking place, those vendors that are seeking to do business with us or seeking to renew a contract with us are prohibited from contacting staff or Board members to discuss anything related to the product or the contract. So we have that in place, and that's been in place for some time. Now, if they do make any contact, then they have to disclose that to us and could potentially be disqualified. Now, on a going-forward basis, we are now requiring the disclosure of marketers, because what happens, as I mentioned before, is that oftentimes, through conferences or through meetings, you may have contact with the third-party marketer, not realizing that they're representing a particular private equity fund or investment manager. And so by having that disclosure upfront, Board members as well as staff is aware of who these folks are and who they're representing. This disclosure has not been uniform across the industry, but I think that's what a lot of people are looking at, and that will help us basically understand who we're dealing with and if that person may be compensated later for securing business with the system. So how that will be reported is any individual that refers an investment opportunity to our consultant, gatekeeper, or staff would be tracked. In addition, we'd want to know the nature of the relationship between these individuals and/or the firms, the investment managers, and then the amount of the compensation that they're receiving, or whatever consideration that they're getting. And then the names of the individuals and the firms by the investment managers and general partners for other clients. So we want to know if that investment manager is using a third-party marketer for, to solicit or to get funds from another investment, another pension fund. So this way, we will have that in our...
Which was what was being suggested had occurred currently.
Right, right. Because in fact, there are a lot of common private equity funds that we all invest in, all three systems do, but a investment manager may have used a placement agent for one of us, but not the other two. But we would want to know, you know, who they've employed and why. And so by having this, we'll just have an open book of who's being employed. And that reporting will be included in our due diligence reports, and it will be reported publicly. So our members and the public will know that information as well. And I think one of the things that we're going to be working with the Ethics Commission on is how to share that information with Ethics, so I could envision a process by which they can cross-check if some of these folks would have to be registered lobbyists. This would be another way of kind of tracking that and monitoring that.
Let me answer my question, too.
For Fire and Police Pensions, we also have a marketing cessation policy, and I'm sure Lasers does the same thing. When the policy kicks in, we send communications to our Board and to the contractors that might also need to restrict their activities or marketing activities with the Board and staff. Ex parte communication is a huge issue, and it was one that was dealt with by the city a few years back in the Hahn administration. There is a ordinance that the city was passed, it's called the Commissioner Participation and Contracting Ordinance. Essentially, it prohibits Board members from having contacts with any of the contractors that we have or that we might have a contract with, from having communications with them on an area that has to do with the contract we have with them or a potential contract we have with them. That's been in place for many years, and it is something that our Board members have had training on on a couple of different occasions. Most recently, on the Board meeting of May 7, this last May. There's sometimes confusion as to the applicability of that, the provisions of that ordinance to our Board. There's thought that it's difficult for them to fulfill their fiduciary responsibilities if they cannot meet with the people that do the work for us, with the various investment advisors or consultants. On the other hand, there's a need for transparency, and there's a need for accountability. And the thought is that that accountability and transparency occurs at the boardroom, and that any conversations that Board members have with the consultants or with the advisors on the contracts that we have with them or potential contracts we have with them ought to occur at the Board level, where all of the Board can participate in the discussion, and all the Board have equal access to the information that's being provided. So what we're doing is making sure that our advisors and consultants and Board members have information on this ordinance. On a going-forward basis, there are a lot of things that we want to do, that we're taking, we'll take advantage of the Calpers study and the New York study as well. I think it's very important for information to come to our system, not just from the consultants and contractors that we deal with. So when they have a contact with one of our Board members or staff, they should be required to come back to us periodically, once every six months, once every year, some periodic basis, and let us know about the contact, what the nature of it was. So the other Board members can put in perspective the information that they're getting. On the other side, I think it's reasonable to have an expectation that Board members and staff also provide information on the contacts that they have. For instance, I was contacted by a placement agent, third-party marketer, last week, asking for a meeting with me. I think it's very important for the Board members to know about the meetings that I have with those placement agents as well. I think the last point I'd like to make is, it was suggested by a couple of our Board members that the conflict information that our Board members fill out, that's sent over to the Ethics Commission, it's called the Form 700, that there's occasions when that conflict information would be helpful for other Board members to know about. So the thought is that the Form 700 information ought to be shared amongst Board members, so if there's a potential conflict, the other Board members would know about it upfront, as opposed to finding out about it when the issue comes before the Board and that Board member has to recuse himself.
Do you not have an attorney present who indicates that reviews those 700s that might say, "There's a problem here, a potential conflict"?
The attorney is present, and they could do that. However, at that point in time, the matter has already been agendized, it's already been looked at by staff. Our consultant, our general consultant could have done a report on it as well. And the thought is that the other Board members would appreciate knowing about that prior to that, prior maybe to an item being agendized, or for it to be, maybe before it's been reviewed a few times. The whole idea, though, is that they would know about potential conflicts upfront, as opposed to finding out about it at the meeting where that conflict would be reported on.
Well, and I think Form 700s are public knowledge, right? And public information? So I would encourage your staff and others to be able to provide that information, because you can go and look at anyone's Form 700 on the Ethics website. Is that correct? Not a website, a phone call. Okay.
Now, if I could, I'm sorry. On the Form 700, the limitation on that is that it's only reporting income. And all of our Board members, pension fund trustees, are high filers, so they have to report all income received during a reporting period. But it doesn't require you to disclose contact. That's a whole different matter. So if you're receiving gifts or income, then they would report it, but it wouldn't, they wouldn't be required to report contact.
If I could clarify, then, what some of our Board members found out was there was reports in the LA Times where disclosures were made about a particular Board member who had a contracting relationship with a placement agent and with a securities litigation firm that the Board had taken an action on. So those are the things they were particularly interested in, and that information was on the Form 700.
And is there a move at all, and this would probably look at the Ethics Commission as well, just like Ethics Commissioners can, you know, there's certain things, if you want to be on the Ethics Commission, you cannot, you know, contribute politically, I mean, there's all kinds of rules there on whether or not we need to change. And Mr. Parks, this may be an amendment to your amendment that would ask the Ethics Commission, along with the three pension boards, to look at restrictions that should be put on any Commissioner that potentially would be considered, no matter who the appointing authority is. And I think that's very, very important as to restrictions put on that. I mean, for example, we have restrictions on if something is within 500 feet of our home residence or business, whatever it may be, that we cannot vote on those things. That's a very public, also, I think it might be helpful so that there's never, that your Commissioners don't have to find out separately that some... commissioners don't have to find out separately that someone else had a conflict by having a look at the Form 700. It'd be better to say, you cannot be a pension commissioner unless you agree that you will not be hired by a placement agent, you will not have anything that has to do with these kinds of investments. And again, I'm sure you can find people who have expertise, who do not have any potential conflict, and I think a particular end of this page. So, if that would be a friendly amendment, Mr. Parks, to that, I would like to do that because I was looking at as well on the whole issue and had not seen the city attorney's opinion specifically on the lobbyist ordinance. I think we have an understanding of what we think a lobbyist is, and I'm not sure anyone before, you know, that things happened in New York and the investigations understood or knew what a placement agent was, I mean, you know, a description. And so, I think that is useful information as to describing with the new ethics law as well, but I think we should look at what kind of people are appointed to the commission so there's no ever a potential conflict that you have to look and find out later on about someone. It just says you cannot be on that pension board if you have any of these relationships and to be able to report that. And so, if I also understand that there's the investment policies or investments are not made just by one individual per se, like it was in New York, which is where the problem was. In each of your entities, there's more than one person making those investments.
That's right. For us, the process would be, in private equity, we have consultants. And the private equity consultant has a database of the variety of private equity funds we have and is looking for other funds to invest in that makes sense, considering the other private equity investments we already have. They'll bring a private equity investment recommendation to our board. Staff has the opportunity to look at the information provided in that recommendation, will agendize it, and the board will vote on the full matter. So, it could be, for example, a recommendation to invest $30 million in a private equity fund managed by Texas Pacific Group. So, it's done out in the open, recommendations made by a private equity consultant. One of the things that we are looking at doing is making sure if a board member wants to make a recommendation for the private equity consultant to look at a particular fund, that the board member disclosed that in an open board meeting, indicate what fund they want to have looked at, as well as where they got the information. For example, did it come from another trustee, from another pension fund trustee? And then that item will be agendized at the very next board meeting and approved as a consent item. So, that gives us full information on how a particular fund could be looked at if a board member wants something looked at.
And I do think we should look at ex parte communications as well and a policy that all three would be able to provide and may, again, be unique to however your board operates. But, Mr. Parks, I'd also add that, I'm not going to do separate motions on this, I will just add that we review ex parte communications and how that is put forward by the boards. And again, I am not necessarily opposed to ex parte communications. There is information and the reason. And I pushed for the contracting ordinance that occurred. The idea was, we didn't want one board member, and this was looking at proprietary departments, to go in and be negotiating with a potential contractor and the staff, and the staff feeling awkward that they're being pushed one way or another by that particular board member. And so, all it was said is that you would have to have another board member present there and it would be an open discussion, or it would happen at the commission level, which we thought was, you know, critically important. Again, I think there are opportunities where you want to gather information, but I think it should be made public. Yes, I had a conversation with X and this is what we talked about, but they provided us with data. And so, that when they're having those conversations, and some, as I've talked to planning commissioners, they feel, many of them say, we'd rather have no ex parte communications, and we have a policy that strictly prohibits any ex parte communication. And I think that as you go forward to look at what would be appropriate as well, and I know during that period of time, why you're about to RFP, but you might want to expand that to a greater area in which you talk about it. Because I think that there's a lot of confusion and clearly, some people are licensed as placement agents, some people are not licensed as placement agents, SEC, you know, issues something. Who falls in that category? Does the state of New York have something different than the state of California as far as your licensing? Do you know?
Not under the SEC, we would apply to all states.
There's no separate, but wasn't there something in New York specifically? And I apologize, I'm just, from what I read, no. They were solely SEC?
SEC or FINRA, the financial, I forgot exactly what it stood for. There are two different organizations they can be registered with.
We're having a hard time here.
There are two different organizations that can be registered with, the SEC or with FINRA. So, they're both, and they're both across the United States.
Okay. And do we check to make sure someone is registered?
No.
No. Okay. So, will that be a change in your policy?
Right. Now that we will know who they are, that would be one of the things that we would ensure as part of the due diligence of seeing what the placement agent's doing, what they're getting compensated for, and then whether they're properly licensed.
Okay. Thank you. My time's up.
Thank you. We have Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Alafcon, Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Parks, a second time, Mr. Zion, a third.
That was quite fascinating. Thank you, Wendy Grove, for your thoroughness on this. And we're looking forward to you being in control there. Gentlemen on the end, again, state your name for the record, I want to ask you a few questions. Hold my turn.
George Aliamo.
And who are you, George?
I'm retired captain and the elected police retired member of the Fire and Police Pension Commission.
How long have you been on it?
Eight years.
Some are elected, some are appointed. How are the ones elected?
They're elected by active police officers, retired police officers, active firefighters, retired firefighters. But once elected, you represent everyone and then you have fiduciary responsibility to the fund.
And those groups that do the electing, how long is the term?
Five years.
And can you be reappointed again, or reelected again?
I just was.
You were just reelected?
Yes.
And do you get paid anything?
$50.
$50?
Yes.
And you sit on top of how much money?
About $11 billion.
$11 billion. And how much time do you put in?
Per meeting? I would say it takes at least 12 hours of reading.
To get ready for a meeting?
Yes.
How often do you meet?
Twice a month and then things like this.
And you got staff to support you and help you?
Yes, of course.
And they're paid people?
Yes, you know.
So, he's a paid guy? And you're the board above it?
Yes.
Okay. And you mentioned some, what I think were pretty unique and outstanding stuff. Say it again. You don't think one person like the mayor should appoint four?
No, not just the mayor, anyone should appoint a majority.
Yeah. Why? Why again?
Because it leaves the opportunity for someone to control it. And some people can't resist that, wanting to push their agenda through by letting it be known what they want done and your job or appointment is--
Is you going to be hypothetical on that, what they would want? I mean, I'm just curious. Is it a certain kind of investment, certain kind of return, or is it politics of some big donor of theirs in the past?
Well, let me give you--
How does that work?
I could give you an example. Henry Cisneros came before us with an investment called City View.
And Henry Cisneros came before you for investment?
Right.
Okay.
And did some background and passed it out to the board concerning his background. And they passed, I wasn't there for the vote, but they did pass and go along with his investment. And then I read, of course, that he put on a fundraiser in San Antonio for the mayor and contributed $10,000. So, let's face the reality, there's favors that are repaid, people are appointed because of support in the past or money donated and things like that. And that's just the reality of the world.
You're basically saying Henry Cisneros, friend of the mayor, fundraiser for the mayor, goes before your group, but he's not going as a director or anything, he's going there to pitch whatever he's got?
Yes. It's a City View. It's a building workforce housing.
And your implication on something like that is, four of the votes are controlled by the mayor, so this is the mayor's guy, the guy gets a shot at--
I understand that wasn't involved in the conversation, but I'm just saying, the perception and appearance of someone having that kind of control will always bring suspicion on that person. Your own Ethics Commission is made up by diverse appointees.
Right, right.
And I think that's safer.
Uh-huh. That's very interesting. And so, is that the same with the other two boards, that the mayor has four out of the seven?
Not for the Water and Power Board, I mean, the Retirement Board. There's three elected members, elected by the employees of the Department of Water and Power. There's one retiree representative, there are two ex-official members, they occupy the position by virtue of the position they hold, that's the general manager and the chief financial officer. And there is one commissioner who also sits on the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. And I think that, I'm sorry, and I think that commissioner is a mayor appointee, but on the other board, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners.
Very cool.
So, we have seven members, four of whom are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by City Council, just like the other two.
So, what's your take of what he just said about four being by the mayor and approved by the council?
I don't really think it matters who--
Please hold my turn.
--an individual is appointed by. What it comes down to is the integrity of the individual, whether they have, they're ethical, can make prudent decisions in the best interest of the system. So, I don't think it really matters how they're appointed or whether they're elected or appointed because they have a duty to the fund. With investment decisions, it's really about process and having the right controls in place because you can have, you know, whatever rules you want, but it comes down to individuals following the rules. But in terms of investment opportunities, every investment is fully vetted, at least at Lasers, is fully vetted by the consultant and staff to then determine whether that investment is worthy of consideration by our board. And that goes through to the Investment Committee, which is made up of multiple people, and then eventually to the full board. So, I think, you know, having a diverse appointment is, you know, is good. I think the way that it works now, it hasn't been a problem for us at Lasers, but, you know, I think whatever changes can be made to enhance transparency and all that are all good things, but I think we haven't had issues in terms of looking at investments that weren't prudent for the fund.
Appreciate it.
I'm trying to prevent that problem. I mean, they may not have it, but it can happen with that. I'm glad it hasn't happened. I can say the same for us.
You got to be safe and sorry and you think more checks and balances accomplish that. Just because you brought up Cisneros, I want to follow up a little bit more on him. Did he get an investment from us and how did that investment pan out for the fund?
He did get it.
He didn't get it?
He did get it.
He did get it?
Yes. He's working on one project up at Selmar and he has two in the works that aren't going anywhere because of the real estate market.
Uh-huh. With the one in Selmar, where you gave him money? You gave him money? Invested?
How much did we do? Yeah, we gave him money.
We're actually in a fund, so along with many other limited partners, we've provided, I believe the amount was around $10 million to the City View Fund. Because of the market downturn, they haven't collected money from us to invest. They're sitting on the market and waiting for it to turn around to provide us the best opportunity to get a good rate of return.
Right, right. Okay. Let me just go back to a general comment because now I'm running out of time here. The criteria that the three boards use to do investments, the criteria that you use, do you do stuff like if it's green and it's clean or it's not South Africa, all these political decisions about certain things? Are we living in that mindset with these three pensions as well?
Well, bottom line is, it's about achieving risk-adjusted returns. So, that's the first and foremost. But our board has adopted some principles in social responsible investing. So, not only are you looking at the investments that are best for the fund to give you the best returns, but we're also looking at making sure that there aren't any geopolitical risks that we're taking that will negatively impact our portfolio. So, we do consider that. We do have special carve-outs in certain areas, in private equity, for instance, where we may be looking at clean tech funds, more specialized funds, and there's a small allocation to those types of investments. But that's balanced against the overall portfolio and, you know, where we're diversifying risk and all that to make sure that we still make, get high expected returns for making those investments. So--
But you do some social engineering, so to speak, as long as it meets your financial requirements?
Right. But it comes down to really the people, the caliber, the investment professionals that are investing that money, the process that they use in making decisions on either stock picks or, you know, selecting private companies to invest with, and then the performance. Do they have a good track record? Have they been able to prove in other funds that they were able to perform and meet the expectations? So, we look at that on the front end, doing a very extensive due diligence, looking at their actual financials and their performance records, and then doing reference checks, going to due diligence visits, going to their offices, making sure that they have their infrastructure in place, all those things. So, no investment decision is made without a very thorough review.
Very good. And yours? Criteria and how you do it?
Well, the criteria, at the end of the day, is the economic viability of the investment and what works best for the beneficiaries of the plan, what is considered prudent. We also follow a very diligent process in arriving at the decision to invest. It's an arms-length, as I had mentioned, an arms-length process. We connect an RFP, there is no contact through board members, and the economic viability of the investment is assessed. We also assess whether it falls into the allocation structure that was adopted by the board. We are relatively new in the area of full discretion investment management and so we're not really well invested into a lot of areas. We're getting there slowly, but--
And the third one?
Yes, we have the same policy that Lasers does. We have a great interest in being able to make a difference, but our primary, our first interest is to make sure that we have a rate of return that's for the benefit of the beneficiaries. However, for example, we have a policy encouraging companies to fully disclose or fully cooperate with a carbon disclosure project. I mean, that's an example of one of the things that we can do to help out in the area. Corporate governance is a huge area for us, something we put a lot of resources and time into. I know the other retirement systems have done the same through the Council of Institutional Investors. But I think I echo the sentiments that both Sally and Sangita talked about, which is, we've got to have a process in first that recognizes, where the board recognizes that any investment made is for the benefit of the system.
Did you want to make a final comment before I sit in?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that pushed the City View was, we were looking to invest in the city. And we always encouraged our money managers to bring us something that are good investments for the city. So, that was one of them. I had answered a lot of questions from the membership because they thought we were investing in the projects or something. And I tried to explain to them that workforce housing wasn't that, you had to be in the $40,000 to $80,000 income range, so, but it took a while to tamper that down. So, I think the investment is probably good. I had a problem with the individual outside.
Now, follow the money is obviously what we always think about in politics and stuff like that. Now, you had to fill out a 700 form?
Yes.
And in that 700 form, do we update them constantly to know what investments you might have or extended family investments or anything to do that might indirectly trickle into somebody's pocket?
We have a form for everything. There's a lot of forms to fill out about every six months about all those things you listed.
I just wanted to make a clarification on City View. City View is a real estate fund that many pension funds have invested in, and it is one that Lasers has also invested in and was fully vetted. We saw it as a good opportunity to invest in LA and it's met our objectives of, you know, achieving high returns. And so, you know, I just wanted to make it clear that the whole investment of City View and any affiliation with Henry Cisneros is irrelevant in terms of the investment decision made by any board.
No, I appreciate that. And I certainly wasn't going anywhere. He mentioned it and I had to flush it through. I've done television, you know, and I kind of like to take questions and really go with it. I'm finished. The last point I want to make is, we need you back again, Mr. Parks, not on this issue, but on how the pension funds impact the city's budget. This is the big issue that we have in this budget crisis here right now. And I do want to report back from all of you. Forget politics and all of us elected, what's the best thing we should do about that pension program in context of our deficits, in the context of how much it eats up of general revenue? And what would you recommend, if you don't have to play politics with us, what the solution should be? Because we need to know this, and I'd like to know this as soon as, if you can do it now, I'd love to have a comment, if not within the next period of time as the mayor's putting together his budget. Or, Mr. Parks, can we do that separately or what? Because the bottom line I want to know is, besides follow the money and all of that issue, which I think is fascinating and I'm glad we had a healthy discussion, the bigger issue for me, outside of that issue, is the pension funds themselves, their viability, the downing economy, and tax dollars, additional taxpayer money going into supporting it.
I think what we did on 11B, the amendment, I think covers what your concerns are, and we also just located there's at least-- we also just located there's at least three prior audits of the funds that have a lot of recommendations about governance and a lot of things that have not been brought to the council for some approval. So I think we're trying to get there in the sense of getting it within a very short period of time. I think if you look at 11B, that amendment motion would cover most of the issues you're concerned with.
Thank you, Don. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you very much.
Mr. Alacon is our next speaker.
Members, the purpose of ethics laws in Los Angeles is to not only root out unethical practice, but also to root out the perception of unethical practice. We are clearly at a juncture where the perception of the public is that money corrupts, and the pension system is where the money is. With a $25 billion portfolio, I believe that we cannot allow the public, and ultimately others who may want to invest in that system, to have a perception of impropriety linger in our system. It could be devastating to the employees, to our future retirees, to our current retirees. It could be devastating to the City of Los Angeles in general in terms of our investment strategies across the board. Mr. Parks, I would like to offer a friendly amendment, that the report include a feasibility analysis as to whether or not it is time for us to employ inspectors general in the pension system. And so I would offer that as a friendly amendment.
Would it incorporate in the original motion asking the CLA to look at all these ideas and come back and report on?
I would like to name that one specifically.
Yeah, we'd be glad to add that.
Thank you, thank you. But I would also like to say, with regard to the, and by the way, the inspector general, from my perspective, should be somebody that is knowledgeable about SEC requirements and practices and enforcement issues, and it should also be somebody who is familiar with pension systems, obviously, if it's one, or whether there has to be several for the separate systems. But I do want to, pardon? I secondly have a concern about Amendment A, and specifically my concern is, we may be putting the cart before the horse. The SEC is conducting an inquiry at least, probably an investigation. I'm not aware of an investigation, but I can surmise that there probably is one. My concern is that we don't know what the result of that inquiry is going to be in that investigation, and we don't know where the problem, if there is a problem, lies. We have offered some sort of rudimentary suggestions of reporting practices, but the concern I have about reporting practices is, we're trying to stop the potential for unethical activity or illegal activity, so if somebody wants to be illegal, they won't do the reporting accurately, and they'll, I mean, if they don't mind breaking one law, why would they mind breaking another? Although I think it's necessary, and I do support it, I would be concerned about the teeth behind it. What would be the repercussions if they don't adhere to the reporting practices? So I'd like to hear some comment on that. But I would also like to say that we need to understand the nature of the problem before we make, certainly before we go to a charter amendment, which would be required if we're going to change the authorities for appointing the commissioners. And so, and I'm sure that Mr. Parks has contemplated that, and I would like to have his response to that. I'll support the motion, don't get me wrong, but I just want to raise the concern, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. I want to understand the nature of the problem, if there is a problem, and I can certainly agree that there is at least a problem of perception that we have to root out of the system. So with that, thank you for the, thank you.
Let the CAO report back.
Yes, I understand.
So we're not changing, they may come back and say, make no changes. We're not limiting them to what their view is.
I understand. I would like to, actually, I would like to seek the advice of the SEC, but I think they will not want to advise us until after they finish whatever it is they're doing. But I think that would be the better time to consider those kinds of changes. The other changes, I don't have a problem with, they're minor in scale. So with that, I also want to commend Mr. Parks and Mr. Zine for their leadership in this. I know they are both very knowledgeable about the pension systems, and we, this is a subject that rises above the collective wisdom, I believe, of the council, and I think we need additional information that we may have to go outside for, outside the pension system and outside our own CLA's operation and CAO's operation, to get guidance from sources that might help us craft a system that the public will appreciate.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a question.
Okay. We have a couple members on the queue. Is there an objection to calling a question?
No objection. It goes back to committee.
Sorry, Mr. Zine? You are. That's why I said, is there any objection? Anybody can call the question. I then inform the council if anybody's on the queue. If people object, it requires a vote, and if they don't, it doesn't.
Can I just close?
Is there an objection? Even after calling the question, I can call on the chair to close, so don't worry. I can still call on you to close, so. Is there no objection to calling a question? If not, then the question is called, and using the president's discretion, I will call on the chair to
Thank you, Mr. President.
to close per council rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to acknowledge my colleague, Mr. Parks, who, budget and finance chair is concerned to make sure we've got the dollars to take care of these funds. We've heard about the banking industry, we've heard about the auto industry, we've heard about the mortgage industry, we've heard about all these industries, and then people then ask, where's the watchdog? Who's watching the house? Who's making sure it's in order? And that's exactly what we're doing here, and that's what our concern is, that we keep that house in order. So I trust the folks that are at the table. I know some of you more than others, your dedication, I know in Georgia, like, for many years, very committed as a retired member of the LAP, as a captain of police. But it's a concern that we have a clean system, a transparent system, and that's what this is all about. Not to criticize any of you, not to criticize any of the commissioners who may have left in recent times, but the fact is, if we don't keep that system clean, we'll end up like the other industries that have had some major issues and major problems. The difference is, the people of Los Angeles end up picking up the tab if it doesn't work right, and that's our concern, that we keep it clean, we keep it right, we keep it transparent. So we'll get the information back from the motions that have gone through, and we'll keep monitoring it. Hopefully, it'll come out as we want it to come out, in a positive fashion. But the motions that Mr. Parks submitted, and I've seconded, hopefully will bring about any changes necessary, if we need to change the commission structure or any of the other parts of it. So I know the market is down, we need to keep it clean, transparent, so we don't have problems, as they've had in other jurisdictions. So with that, we would then, Mr. Parks, a comment as we close? One thing, we move the many motions, 11A and B, but we also, for the record, reflect that there are three audits, 07-3866, 07-3865, and 09-0518, should be a part of that discussion and report back, because many of them have recommendations about governance about what we're concerned with. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. With that, as amendments are accepted as friendly, and let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. All right. And if we can take Special 1 out of order, and Mr. City Attorney, if you'd be most kind on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll reset the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, Caltrans has notified city staff of the need to take actions to relinquish portions of Gaffey Street before June 1st in order to accept $3 million in state funding. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
On the findings, if nobody wishes to be heard, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote. That is 12 ayes, and it is now before us, Ms. Hahn.
Just a simple street relinquishment. The state of California will be turning over to the City of Los Angeles, Gaffey Street, which is the main thoroughfare into San Pedro, and on top of that, they were going to be giving us $3 million to make needed repairs to the street. We need to do this today. June 1st is our deadline. I ask for your aye vote on this very important issue in my district.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. If nobody else wishes to be heard, let's prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. We'll send that forth with, without objection. Absolutely. My beliefs, number 26, Mr. Reyes, so you're going to move to continue that till Friday? Is that right? If there's no objection, we'll continue that till the 29th on Friday. We do have some folks that are here for a closed session. We will have some items just after as well. We have item 38, just so folks can pace their afternoons, we'll probably be here for about another 40, 45 minutes, and we're going to be down with our excuses to 11 members, so folks can just be sure to stay here.
13 ayes.
Yes. So let's go ahead and to, just before, item 24, we have one speaker card, I think? Okay. That was Mr. Sax for the record, and so then we can take up 24, if nobody wishes to be heard on this from the council. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And that is approved as well. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. If we can take up item 38 next? Oh, that was the one that we just, okay. So that will take us to item number eight. That was called special by Ms. Hahn, but I think she has had her questions answered on that, so let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. If we can next take up our closed session item number 46, and I believe we have a card on that as well, before we go into closed session, Matt Dowd in San Pedro.
Is he going to make us, he's going to make us wait for the rest of the items to close session? 11 was substantially different.
Excuse me. Mr. Dowd, at number 46 is before us.
Member?
You have a comment on?
46.
46. Thank you, yes. Yeah, don't spend a penny on San Pedro, it's no one here. But look, no, sorry, it's just nobody here, I was distracted because normally there aren't people around me.
Item 46.
Yeah, this is a, see, city attorney, I've called for it before. I'm so glad there's a new city attorney coming into the city, because the previous one, the one who's in there right now, a lot of faults, a lot of problems, probably going to get tied into a lot of the pension scanners, everything, and so this one, I say, you're in litigation with the federal government, of course.
Thank you. That'll close the public comment on 46. Please, we now will need to go into closed session on 46. We'll come back for the open session ones, but we want to ensure city staff that is here on this item can be heard as soon as possible on this consent decree, so we'll come back into open session shortly after. If we can please clear the room, and we'll return as soon as this item is discussed. If we can please clear the room, and we'll return as soon as this item is discussed.
We are back in session. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 20, and I believe council also wanted to take 39 with that item.
So 20 and 39 would be before us. We do have a few speaker cards. Is Phil Jenner John here? Mr. Jenner John. Okay. We go out to Sam Pedro Zuma Dogg and Matt Dowd.
Oh, Budget. Hey, Matt. This is about the Budget. Resolution for fiscal. Now, first of all, I would have appreciated public comment on 11 about the pension because that was substantially different than when you had public comment. I think anybody that's not Helen Keller would agree. But the pension, I'm going to tie it into the Budget because we're talking about the Budget here as submitted. Now, everybody talks about the half a billion dollar budget crisis that we're facing and all the services and loss of jobs and whatnot. You must remember, you also lost $7 billion in the pension funds. And it's a real shame to people because a few people that back these city council members and then the commission appointments go in, they get approved, they put the money into the shell Wall Street firms and the CRA developments that are way too risky, and now we have $7 billion of a loss. And I'm here to tell you people, you know, as far as going bankrupt, the state cannot declare bankruptcy. The city can and will. I'm here to say 2013 is the absolute latest that the city will be in bankruptcy. I, Zuma Dogg, am here to predict the City of Los Angeles under Mayor Antonio Viragosa will be facing bankruptcy next calendar year. And I would just like to say, this is public comment, and my public comment is, how dare Mayor Antonio Viragosa do this to the city under his watchful eye? And you city council members approved every commissioner that is responsible for the $7 billion loss, and I am damn glad that there's a federal investigation. And of course, it's way too late now, people. I don't know what the situation, you better hop on your plane to Dubai out of here because you're about to have all hell break loose on the street. You are going down in history. You've destroyed this city. $7 billion lost. Deal with that. You're not going to be able to.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matt Dowd, you have one minute.
First of all, I've only had one minute on two items, so I've got two minutes left.
You have one minute.
Well, that'll be another lawsuit, you know. See, that's why you're, it's one of the reasons I've said you're in a budget mess. All the outside councils, all the litigation because of all the dumb policy. Right? And now, see, now you have to make, you have to find the $7 billion for the fire and police pension, so it's going to come out of the general fund. So it's going to affect the budget for the next 20 years. And so we've got to look forward at how to deal with that. And I think the medical marijuana dispensaries, the co-ops, first of all...
Mr. Zuma Dogg, would you please, you are not public speaking...
...that's one way to raise money in taxes to balance the budget.
Mr. Zuma Dogg, please move out of the picture. You are not public speaking. Go ahead, Mr. Dowd. You have four seconds.
Yeah, it's one of the things that one of the mayoral candidates came up with, but I do believe the future of the city will lie in gaining revenue from some of the marijuana dispensaries.
Thank you very much. That public comment is closed on that. We do Julie Butcher. I'm not sure if Julie is here. Public comment is closed on that item. Colleagues, since Mr. Matt Dowd and Mr. Zuma Dogg have completed their time allotted today, we'd like to take the other items remaining before we get to item 20 and go ahead and approve them. Madam Clerk, would you put them forward as well?
Yes, Madam President. Those are items 28, 36, 37, and 43.
Thank you. And on 25, Mr. Tom McCarthy, is he here? Okay, not, then we'll also take item 25. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 11 and 12. Thank you. Those items have been approved. Yes.
A question from the Councilwoman of the 15th District to reconsider item number eight, continue it to June 3rd.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number eight for reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 11 and 12. That'll be continued till Friday, I believe. Okay. Thank you. So our last item on the agenda, colleagues, I'm still showing 36, 37, and 43, which we did approve. Okay. Okay, so we're on item number 20 as our last item.
And 39.
Excuse me, and 39, thank you. Mr. Parks.
Madam Chair, let me just, we've gone through this very laboriously, but I'm going to ask Jerry to give us, first of all, what the process is once we approve this today, what is the timing, and then go into an overview of the state and how it might impact us in the future, and if you can give us a thumbnail of really what we're approving, the highlights of what are some of the major issues in this budget.
Certainly. Well, in terms of your last question first, what is before you today is the budget resolution that really memorializes the actions that you took last Monday. So this is the formal action that will approve the budget and send it to the mayor. Under the charter, the mayor has five business days in which to veto if he so chooses. If the mayor does choose to do that, then the council would have five business days in which to override. The budget before you is a total of roughly $7 billion, about 4.4 billion is general fund. As you all know, it has been a very difficult year. The budget before you eliminates the mayor's proposed elimination of 1,600 positions, approximately 400 of those are filled. The council, in its budget, added another 800 layoffs, so what you have before you is a budget that includes 1,200 layoffs. It also includes 26 furlough days for each employee, one furlough day per pay period. That is roughly, each civilian employee, that's roughly a 10% salary cut. Also before you, you have attrition hiring for LAPD. The fire sworn hiring plan is going forward unchanged. And the budget has, in essence, approximately roughly 150 to 160 million in as-yet unidentified reductions that will either have to come from concessions from the unions or additional furloughs and layoffs. That number represents the sworn portion of the shared responsibility and sacrifice.
Let me just ask if, again, on that 160 million dollars, if those dollars are moved totally onto the civilian workforce, what does that amount to in either layoffs or additional furlough days?
Furlough days for civilians are about 4 million per day, so that would be roughly about another 40 furlough days.
If strictly the furlough.
Right. Layoffs are approximately 50 million for every 1,000 layoffs, roughly. So we're looking at additional layoffs. Again, if it were all done on the civilian side and all by layoffs, we're looking at additional roughly 3,500 layoffs, give or take. That assumes seven months' funding, so obviously decisions will need to be made quickly relative to whatever concessions we get because the longer that we take to launch the process of starting to cut back on staff, the more positions have to be eliminated. Now, in terms of the state budget, things are changing daily. We're monitoring constantly. In summary, what's before them, and I'll try to focus on what most impacts the city. There is a $24.3 billion deficit, according to the legislative analyst as we speak. It has grown by about $3 billion in the recent last couple of weeks. Variety of things are proposed. There are $9 billion in program cuts that are proposed. The borrowing from the cities is still on the table. However, in the last couple of days, it's become a little bit more complicated. I think the state has recognized that they are probably not going to be able to do a cash flow borrowing themselves, so they are now looking at additional program cuts for the 5.5 billion they were going to borrow from the market. The $2 billion from local agencies is still on the table. That would be roughly 120 million to the city. There has been some, there is some opposition to that, however. Bill Lockyer and John Chang have both come out against it. The legislative analyst has come out against borrowing from local agencies. They're now exploring the possibility of borrowing from special districts, you know, water districts, sanitation districts, et cetera. They have more flexibility in terms of their revenue sources, and the state for some time has been trying to get those off the general fund and have them fully fee supported, so they're looking at that. But at this point, things are changing continuously. There will be some substantial cuts that could impact the city from a trickle-down effect. They're looking at potentially releasing, I believe, the number they're talking about is 95,000 prisoners from early release. That obviously could place a burden on, you know, our social network and some other things. So they are very drastic cuts. They're also looking at accelerating personal income tax, so you will see your withholding go up, and you'll pay more state income tax earlier, and then it would go down later in the year, so they're also pushing some money up.
Let me ask Jerry, on this budget, did any portion of it, did we address some of the structural issues versus the one-time expenditures, and how will it impact us next fiscal year?
Well, certainly the layoffs and position eliminations are structural, clearly. The furloughs are one-time in nature. The furloughs amount to about a little over 100 million of the balancing, so that would add 100 million to the 2011 problem, which, as you know, stands at, already at 500 million.
Plus if the furloughs are one year.
Well, the furloughs are one year. The issue would be whether the furloughs would continue into 2011, but the furloughs don't reduce the workforce. They are a short-term but important and quick saving mechanism.
And then also with furloughs, is it any, excuse me, impact on the budget as far as pensions? Do we get a relief there?
We get some relief there because our payroll actually is lower. We're paying people roughly, essentially, we're paying people 10% less, so the regular contribution to pension goes down. However, we have to continue to make the benefits payments, the healthcare and Duhle and fringe benefits.
Do we have any sense of when the state would have more concrete information as to how it affects the cities?
They have established a conference committee of five members from both houses that are meeting all of this week. As a matter of fact, tomorrow in Sacramento, the hearings are focused on public safety and local impacts from the May revise. And we're talking with the mayor's office, and of course, they have been up all week and will be represented tomorrow. The desire is, I believe, to get something hammered out by sometime next week so they can move on to the legislature for approval. They fully intend to have something in place before the end of June.
End of June?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks. That item is, oop, just appeared. LaBange, it was blank, and then it was LaBange and Rosenthal.
Okay, just a question I wanted to know here. I've heard from people that are concerned about layoffs, Jerry. Okay. What, who's given that list out? How is it going to buy? If people are, no one likes bad news, but when they don't know the news, they don't like it even worse. They would like to kind of be braced for it. What is our status on that?
The departments, the department heads are now working with personnel to develop the list based on two things. As you recall, in the mayor's budget, there was an elimination of 400, roughly 400 filled positions. Those were specified reductions and specified programs. On top of that is a shared responsibility and sacrifice that will take roughly another 10% out. So in all of that, the department heads are identifying the position classifications that would have to be eliminated, and they're working with the personnel department.
I just said, I don't know, but I know Mr. Muckery tries real hard, but I've just been informed that they have to look at these extra 100 positions that they're losing to possibly curtail activities at rec centers for two days a week, two days out of seven, some of these issues here. There should be some discussion on how that works and make sure that it is painful that we're going through. There's no question, you as an administrator, the chief administrator, the legislative analyst office, City of Los Angeles, this is a very dark period that we're going through, correct?
Absolutely.
We're going to have to take very tough times, and it's going to have to displace some people because if there's no food on the cupboard, you can't feed the family. Right now, there's less food on the cupboard to feed all the family that's necessary to serve all the people. That being said, who's managing from either legislative office or the CIO to make sure that the restrictions, which we're going to have to do when tightening belt, are not services, that there's an option? You know, if it's across the board, it may not make sense. More people need sanitation and some quality of life issues as opposed to some other issues. How do we decipher that? How do we administer that?
Well, again, it won't be across the board, and before anyone actually is eliminated, we will all come back to you with a report on what the impact of that is going to be.
When they're eliminated, I don't want to say they were eliminated, but they would be laid off. But at some time, if there's an opening, will they have an option to get a job back?
Yes, that's, part of this process is to try and place people who are going to be laid off, whether it's a special...
And will they have an option to go to the harbor, the airport, or water power, which is sometimes have that?
If there are positions that they're qualified for and that are open, yes, absolutely.
I think it certainly is the biggest thing on the workforce for us. The bigger picture, I know, we heard it today when they spoke of, 550,000 people in this county, in this region, have lost their jobs. It's a tremendous impact that is affecting us all, but I think the information is very important now. Day after day, we talk in the paper that we're making severe cuts, but people don't know what they're going to do. I think they're very anxious to hear what the plan is, and I think we need to hear the plan from the CIO as well as the CLA.
Well, and it is important to get back to you very quickly. I do, I do want to be frank here. There aren't a lot of opportunities in harbor and airports anymore. As you know, we eliminated 700 positions in the current budget, about 350 of which were filled, and fortunately, almost all of those people were able to be placed, but the opportunity to place people is just not there like it was in the past.
Good, but I just want to get that out. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Jerry, I want to be real clear here because, you know, this is ho-hum at this point because we've gone through this process. I'm on the budget committee. We did da-da-da-da-da-da. We really worked hard, and then we did the whole council thing. But today, the line you set at a certain point was this: If we can't get concessions from the unions, we might have to lay off another 3,500 people from already the 400 and the 800. So how many people are we laying off right now, approved by the process? Is it 400 or is it 1,200?
It's 1,200 that's going forward in your budget today.
1,200 layoffs will happen when we approve the budget today. The process will begin.
The process will begin.
Will there be anything to stop that from actually happening, or are those 1,200 folks out of here?
That would depend on any concessions that we're able to get from the unions and whether that brings down our payroll. If there are positions that they're qualified for and that are open, yes, absolutely.
I think it certainly is the biggest thing on the workforce for us. The bigger picture, I know—we heard it today when they spoke of—five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people in this county, in this region, have lost their jobs. It's a tremendous impact that is affecting us all. But I think the information is very important now. It's day after day, we talk in the paper, that we're making severe cuts, but people don't know what they're going to do. I think they're very anxious to hear what the plan is, and I think we need to hear the plan from the CIO as well as the CLA.
Well, and it is important to get back to you very quickly. I do—I do want to be frank here. There aren't a lot of opportunities in harbor and airports anymore.
I got it.
As you know, we eliminated seven-hundred positions in the current budget, about three-hundred-and-fifty of which were filled. And fortunately, almost all of those people were able to be placed, but the opportunity to place people is just not there like it was in the past.
Good, all right, but I just want to get that out. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Jerry, I want to be real clear here, because, you know, this is ho-hum at this point because we've gone through this process. I'm on the budget committee. We did da-da-da-da-da-da. We really worked hard, and then we did the whole council thing. But today, the line you set at a certain point was this: If we can't get concessions from the unions, we might have to lay off another thirty-five-hundred people from already the four-hundred and the eight-hundred. So, how many people are we laying off right now approved by the process? Is it four-hundred or is it twelve-hundred?
It's twelve-hundred that's going forward in your budget today.
Twelve-hundred layoffs will happen when we approve the budget today. The process will begin.
The process will begin.
Will there be anything to stop that from actually happening, or are those twelve-hundred folks out of here?
That would depend on any concessions that we're able to get from the unions and whether that brings down our payroll on an ongoing basis. It takes time.
All right. So, what kind of concessions would we need to have, forgetting the politics or any of that, to save those twelve-hundred folks that are on the block right now?
Well, from a dollar standpoint, it's somewhere between ten and fifteen percent of payroll. And how that's made up, whether it's COLA givebacks, and I'm sure Ray, who does the negotiation, can perhaps get into more specifics, but at the end of the day, our payroll needs to go down by between ten and fifteen percent.
Okay. Ray, let's go to you then. There's two sets of layoffs we're talking about here. We're potentially talking about twelve-hundred that we have authorized as a council. Is that correct?
You basically threw the budget, authorize deletion of about eleven-hundred positions.
Eleven-hundred positions.
Now, I can't necessarily tell you exactly the number of layoffs that that translates to.
Okay.
And actually, and I apologize for coming late to the discussion, because I was just in a general manager meeting where we're talking about this same issue.
Sure.
Because one of the things that I wanted to convey to them is it's truly up to each general manager to determine what their salary appropriation is and how far that goes. So, meaning with the CIO's budget, I know I only have X dollars, and if I cannot afford everyone in payroll, I either have to look at furloughs as an option to cover part of that. If it's not enough, then I will have to truly go and submit a layoff list to personnel.
Okay. So, we need to know the facts. I got to know the facts. We're voting on something today, and I don't know the facts. You said maybe eleven-hundred positions, but you don't know how many of those positions are filled and where it's going. Is that right?
That is true. I cannot tell you exactly. We know there are roughly about three-hundred filled positions in the mayor's proposed budget that are basically slated to go. But it will truly be up to the departments to actually find out whether—who actually will hit—the—you know, hit the street.
Jerry?
If I could clarify, unfortunately, you'll never—you won't know exactly until the point at which the departments actually come back to you with the deletions because it's constantly changing. Other things that could avoid layoffs would be there's discussion about a cash buyout program. If attrition is higher, if more people retire, if people simply leave, all of those mitigate how many filled positions are actually laid off. So, you—you know the appropriation for the department. How the departments handle that is going to be the difficult thing. It equates to roughly twelve-hundred what we estimate to be filled positions. Whether twelve-hundred people are actually laid off is something that you won't know until we go through the process.
Okay. But Ray, back to you. Let's take Jerry's point before. If we can't get other concessions, we might have to lay off another thirty-five-hundred. Is that a factor?
I think it's a true—it's a possibility. That's correct. As we are looking and sitting down with our labor partners, you know, trying to defer cost of living increases, maybe changing some overtime rules, things of that sort, if we basically and cannot come with some relief or some solution, if we can't come up to some agreement on a severance plan, then we're faced with some significant downsizing on a more painful level, as Jerry indicated.
All right, but we just don't know. So, what we approve today? What are we approving today?
Today, you are approving what you had adopted last week. Basically, you had the mayor's position deletions with—on top of that, you had the shared sacrifice amount of two-thirty-one, and that amount was increased, and that's roughly about fourteen percent of payroll for every department.
All right, so in conclusion, we have eleven-hundred-something positions, of which maybe three-hundred bodies are in it, human beings are in it, that would go. And if there aren't further concessions or discussions are coming out, we might lay off as many as thirty-five-hundred more.
Well, again, that would be if all of it is in the civilian side. Depending upon what happens, you're going to have the policy discussion about how to realize those savings.
Okay.
Now, there was discussion about furloughing police and fire—uh, police. Fire can't be furloughed. There was discussion about reducing the number of apparatus, for example, and reducing constant staffing overtime. There are other options, but if those reductions are entirely on the civilian side, you're looking at roughly thirty-five-hundred—
So, when does this council come back in and visit this issue? If we approve today where we're going, will we be kept updated on a weekly basis and maybe have to come back in and reorganize and figure out what to do? Mr. President, Mr. Parks?
Reopen the special budget committee now that we've had the elections to go back through this. Although, any changes we recommend cannot be implemented till after July first.
Yeah. And my last question is, Ray, the state went the way it did. I'm told seventy to one-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar new hole in our budget. Is that true?
Yeah, roughly, it's looking about sixty-eight million dollars is what—at a minimum is what we're looking at.
Okay. So, in conclusion, we're just in the first step. The budget processes are still going on. What we're setting up is a backdrop with the hope that there are more negotiations and discussions that lessen the potential layoffs.
That's true. I think that the one point that needs to be across and across is basically we need to downsize our workforce. We're either going to be able to do it in a less painless way through concessions or perhaps a severance plan. If there's either that way that's less painless, or there's going to be a way that's going to be a little bit more painful and harder for our employees. But we—at the end of the day, we have to downsize.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask colleagues that we move items twenty and thirty-nine. Thirty-nine is giving the authority to the Budget and Finance Committee to start a special budget meetings, to come back and review what's going on on the state level, and then bring back recommendations to the council. That is—those are meetings in addition to our regular Monday meetings, so there'd be special meetings, and we'll be able to assess this. As I mentioned earlier to Mr. Rosenthal, any recommendations that we make will be posed for after July first as it relates to us finding out how much money that the state may take from us or other financial issues. The final thing I'd like to ask in moving this is that we had a final motion to this budget, and I'd like to, in behalf of Budget Committee, basically ask that we honor Wendy Gruel in her last budget, that we dedicate this budget for her as being the—
[laughter]
No, 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 no.
You couldn't have found a year when there was a surplus to dedicate to her?
No, no, we didn't want to give her that one. But we're securing that as the controller, she's not going to send us that letter and say, "What happened to your general fund or your reserve fund?" So, we're kind of putting blocks in place. No, we wanted to honor her because she put five years on the Budget Committee as vice chair, and just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I know we called Julie Butcher before, and she's here. Ms. Butcher, did you want to give a public comment?
I know you've heard from us a great deal on this budget, and that's because this budget crisis is real, and it's big, and it's not going to be solved without losing—the loss of city workers and critical services. The question before you is, what is the least devastating way that we can reduce the city workforce? City workers have been working on a plan for the last year, in fact, since the last budget hearings, when you sent us off, gave instructions to the CIO to work out an early retirement incentive opportunity. We've been at it since this time last year to work out something efficacious, and we've come up with a plan and put before you a plan that would—in fact, this year saved two-hundred-and-forty-two million dollars; over sixteen years, saved two-point-two-billion dollars, in part paid for by the city workers. L.A. city workers have always stepped up, will step up now, and believe that we need to be part of L.A.'s economic recovery. We've put a plan before you that would literally pump millions of dollars into the local economy as opposed to further exacerbating the burgeoning lines of unemployment. I stand before you to remind you that these workers have stepped up every time they've been asked to do that, and to remind you that this city has never unilaterally implemented and has never laid off massive numbers of workers. Furloughs are neither legitimate nor structural as a way to balance this budget and represent illegal wage cuts, devastating cuts to the families of Pablo and Sylvia, Cedric and Elias, the men and women who clean your offices. This problem is too big and too deep to turn away from structural systemic solutions that have been offered, and to do so, we believe, would be simply to drive a stake through our local economic recovery. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie. That will close our public comment. Any other members wishing to be heard? If not, we have before us this resolution. We can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Turn your eyes.
That is approved. We'll send that forth with to the mayor for his signature. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
These items are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Committee announcements, anything? All right, do we have any adjourning motions? If I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for our adjourning motions. Yeah, Ms. Gruel?
Transportation Committee will meet immediately following this council meeting.
Okay. If I can ask everybody to please rise? If I can ask everybody in chambers to please rise? Adjourning motions, Mr. Parks?
President, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Gail Belinda Beasley, a thirty-four-year career employee with the Los Angeles Police Department in their civilian ranks. She was born December nineteen fifty-three and passed away May twelfth, two thousand and nine. She began her education in McCray Elementary School and then went to Prescott High School, where she played in the high school band. She's been with LAPD since nineteen seventy-five. She was a loving and compassionate woman who also was a foster parent, enjoyed bringing the New Year with her family and friends. She was also known as the queen of the cruises. The family certainly savored those days that they spent on board. Funeral service is Thursday, May twenty-first. She survived by her mother, three brothers, and a host of other relatives.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Gene Dudley, thirty-three years, passed away on Memorial Day, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and nine, after having been diagnosed with adipatous pulmonary fibrosis nearly three-and-a-half years ago. Gene made a very valiant effort to cope with this very debilitating disease that is affecting forty-thousand additional persons annually for which there is neither remedy nor cure. Richard Lieboff, his partner, feels very fortunate and blessed that Gene was part of his life for many years, and their cat, Tebow, were with him to the very end. Together, they transcended far beyond what each of them could have done individually, as was Gene's wish. He will be cremated, and we will have a memorial service for him at—in a future date. It was Gene's wish not to have flowers. His desire was that donations be made in his memory to the Coalition for Pulmonary Fibrosis, sixteen fifty-nine, Bradham Lane, number two-two-seven, San Jose, California, nine-five-one-one-eight, and his website is www.coalitionforpf.org. May Gene Dudley rest in peace.
Ms. Perry is the secretary. Mr. Zion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Alakhan joins me. Mr. adjourning motion, Dwight K. Burgess, passed away May twenty-first. Great sadness that I adjourn in memory of the passing of Dwight, an active community member in Winnetka. Born in Hawaii, September twenty-third, nineteen fifty-seven, served two years in the United States Army, armed and discharged in nineteen seventy-seven. Had a great outlook on life and his passion to serve. His beloved community of Winnetka led him to become a strong supporter of many programs, including My Community Posse. He, along with his companion Marilyn Robinson, fondly known as the Princess of Winnetka, patrolled their neighborhood and reported graffiti, trash, other blight affecting their neighborhood. If Dwight was not actively reporting graffiti or cleaning the community, he was busy participating at the annual Memorial Day Parade in Canoga Park, the Winnetka Chambers Oktoberfest, Winnetka Foundation, food and toy drives, or helping provide toiletries to local senior facilities. Not only be remembered for his amazing work in the community, but for the larger-than-friendly attitude he carried with him. He survived by four siblings, David, Eloise, Davian, and James. Personal comment on Dwight, I met him in two thousand and one when I first elected. He suffered emphysema, always was on oxygen. He had a motorized wheelchair, and he would be zipping through the community at different activities. He never let that disability hamper his activities within the community. He was always with a smile, a large man. You could tell he was Hawaiian by just his appearance and his personality, but always very, very friendly, and he was a companion of the Princess of Winnetka, Marilyn Robinson. I created that title for her many years ago, after two thousand and one, their love for the community. But you named the program, the organization. They were involved recently during the holiday season. They were at the senior homes, passing out toiletries to the residents at the retirement center. So, he would be sorely missed. I know Marilyn is very sad at his passing. The community is very, very sad with the passing. Just a wonderful man who gave so much back to the community. May he rest in peace, Dwight K. Burgess. Mr. Alakhan?
Mr. Alakhan?
Yeah, I join with Mr. Zion. A lot of people don't realize that as a state senator, I represented half of the San Fernando Valley, including Winnetka and all the way out to the West Hills, and there were no more common faces in the community events than Dwight and Marilyn because they were all over. The most interesting thing, first of all, with regard to Dwight, he was extremely humble in his approach to community service. He didn't look for any recognition whatsoever. He just wanted to help out, and he was very domineering sight, but he was a very humble personality. He would—whether it was giving toys out at the gift of Christmas program in Winnetka, at the Guadalupe Center in Canoga Park, or whether it was fixing a streetscape in Winnetka, he and Marilyn both represented, I think, an appreciation for the cultural transition that was occurring in Winnetka. What most people don't understand is Winnetka was one of the most—was the whitest community in the San Fernando Valley not too long ago, and in a period of ten years, it became the most diverse community in the region of Los Angeles, according to the last census. So, there were dramatic changes in Winnetka, and it was almost as if, without speaking it, Dwight and Marilyn were on a mission to unite the people of Winnetka, to embrace this new diversity, and to do it without—a word, but with action. And I know that Marilyn will continue her work, and now with the passion of Dwight's passing in her—in her heart. And I know that Dwight will have a long-lasting impact on anybody who worked with him. He's an inspiration, particularly for those who are not hindered by disabilities. He is—he stands to embarrass those of us who find excuses for not pitching in because he had so many ways to get out of pitching in, and yet he always was there. So, I am very saddened by his passing. We're going to miss him at all of the events. I didn't see him as much, obviously, because I don't represent that area anymore, but he will be missed, and I hope that his legacy will be in the many young people that he touched through his action, that they too will be inspired to be community servants as Dwight Burgess was.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Zion? Another one, and then the secretary.
I have one other adjourning motion, and this is Pearl Vogel. She is the mother of Rabbi Vogel from Temple Aliyah in my district. Born in Uruguay, September twenty-ninth, nineteen thirty-seven, came to the United States in nineteen fifty, resided in the San Fernando Valley most of her life, attended Van Nuys Junior High and North Hollywood High School. Graduated San Fernando Valley College of Law, was a practicing attorney for twenty-nine years. A great woman who will be dearly missed, survived by two sisters, five children, nine grandchildren, three great-grandchildren. Just a wonderful lady, a wonderful spirit, and she was always at the events at the Temple Aliyah, and always so proud of her son, Rabbi Vogel, who's been an inspiration to the Valley community. May she rest in peace, Pearl Vogel.
Thank you. Mr. Alakhan?
Members, I ask for you to adjourn in memory of Warren Willie Braun, a retired member of the Los Angeles Fire Department, who lived a good life. He was also a member of the Retirement Board for the Police and Fire Association. He survived by his sons, Tony and Eric. Warren Braun.
Thank you. If there's no other adjourning motions, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? If there's no other adjourning motions, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Well, next—